Five, four, three, two, one.
Great. Good evening and welcome all to the sixteenth meeting for fiscal year 2023. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order. To begin, let's introduce ourselves to, to the public. If we'd like to begin, Sean.
Sean Fahey, member.
Rich.
Beeler, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Tagayas, secretary.
Maggie.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, chairman of the planning board. And now to introduce our staff. Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, director of planning and community development.
Josh.
Josh Lee, assistant town planner.
And Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Great. Thank you all. So we can now go to our administrative items. And let's begin with the approval of minutes. We had last meeting deferred December eighth for just a review of some edits that Cheryl had made. And then we also have our January twelfth. Has everybody been able to review those minutes?
I also circulated edits for the January twelfth. Everybody get those?
Yes. So the only edit I had on January twelfth was where it said that STACK had recommended that for one and a half to two inch caliper trees, but it was actually just, he stated two inch trees. I went back and I listened.
I'm sorry.
It was just two inch. It was just a two inch.
Oh, I see. Okay.
It wasn't a one and a half to two. It's just.
I got it. Okay.
Okay. So we can delete the one and a half?
Yeah.
Great. Is that amendment acceptable to the members?
Yes.
It is to me.
Great. Okay. Then with that, can I have a motion to accept the minutes for December eighth and January twelfth?
So move as amended.
Second?
Second.
Great. Roll call. Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Minister approved. All right. And then moving to the discussion of our next meeting dates, we have, as you all recall, February ninth scheduled, which we had moved the public hearing for 1200 Rush Hill Road. So we committed to that date. And we'll have some other big things coming on at that time. So February ninth and then I have February twenty-third. Is that correct? Tim? Or did we change?
I'm just bringing my calendar up. So yeah, the, the ninth and the twenty-third would be our regularly scheduled planning board meetings. We've also, we penciled in the sixteenth for an MBT communities public forum. We'll discuss that later. And then I had emailed the group. I don't know. I don't want to steal your thunder, Meredith. If you wanted to talk about this, but we had gotten a request from the, the memory care applicant to consider an adjustment to the March schedule in terms of opening a public hearing for that project. February, March, except in the leap year, very, very fun. All the dates are the same. So the ninth and the twenty-third are the regularly scheduled meetings. The request is to bump that schedule a week. So meeting on the sixteenth and the thirtieth instead. They, they won't have materials ready for the ninth, but we'll have materials ready for the sixteenth. And that accounts for advertising for the public hearing and everything like that. So still two meanings in March, just bumping them each a week. So it's, it's up to you all.
Does that seem to work for everybody to move those March dates? I know we're, we're looking a month ahead, but just to, for scheduling purposes. At this time.
Can you repeat those dates? I'm sorry, Tim.
Yeah, same, please.
So it would be the, the, the February meetings are on the normal schedule, the second and fourth Thursday. And then March would be March sixteenth and March thirtieth.
I'm good with those dates, but.
Rich, you're on mute.
Thanks. Sorry. It March thirtieth. I don't know why, but I have something on that day that says that I had to take work off for. So you know, as long as it's nothing that I need to be on there for, I mean, it probably doesn't matter, but I may, I just have to look. I can leave tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, the thinking here was to accommodate public hearings for the memory care special permit. But you know, under the under the Mullen rule, you can, you can miss one hearing as long as you watch the recording. So it's not, it's not fatal to your ability to make a decision on that one.
Okay.
As we think about these dates, I know we have four forty granted app and we have the member care. Those are two large projects. And you know, we have an election in April and you need certain number of votes for these. And you can't vote on something if you weren't in the meetings prior to it. So I'm wondering whether we need or whether we should pencil in a a meeting, a third meeting in March. I just would, I think it would be beneficial for, we don't have to do it now, but to think about it as we think about two large projects. In my experience on the board, those projects can take multiple nights. And you know, you'd really hate, we'd really hate to spend a couple of months on them and then not be able to get to a vote and have to start all over again. So.
Yes. Why don't we, why don't we circle back? We'll have Tim maybe send out an email to everybody and we can look at some of those dates and look at our calendars to see.
But yeah, so that was just my question. Because these are larger projects, do you really think they can be accomplished just in three meetings or four meetings? I feel like past history is it, especially if it's this big, especially the memory care and granted out, I feel like it's going to be more than that. I mean, I just look at my personal experience and you know, mine wasn't a change of use and I, that went on for thirty meetings.
Maggie, what I would say is, and I had a conversation, I think with Tim about this. If it wasn't you, Tim, maybe it wasn't that. But in any case, it's like what we did at in particular, I'm remembering Walcott Woods is we mapped out a whole schedule. So we said, okay, the first night will be this, the second night, this, the third night, this. And so that we could have the appropriate consultants, team consultants there. And if we needed people on our end to be present, let's say it's the town engineer, whomever, that we could line people up in advance. And then also if members of the public are interested mostly, let's say in traffic, they would know which night is going to be traffic. So they don't have to attend four meetings in a row, for example, if they're not as concerned about something else. So I think that's a really good approach. And then what can happen is let's say you start with an overview and then you start and then you have, let's say it's, you know, storm water. So you can then get your questions together for storm water. So storm water comes back at another meeting. So you know, that is.
So Tim and I can, I think that's a great idea, Cheryl. So why, Tim, you and I can work on that and sort of mapping out sort of a progression. It's, it's, you know, memory care is going to be very different because it's going to really involve, you know, conservation commission comments, you know, we're, there's a lot to look at there. So but I think we can, we can certainly do that. And, and that'll be helpful to the applicants as well.
And then one other thing I'll suggest is that we've done before too, if there's a lot of public comment is that we limit public comment to three minutes. That's been done on, that this board has been done at the select board and other boards because it's important that we have time to get through all the material and our, and our questions.
Yep. Good point. So that sound good. So Tim, you'll circulate. We'll talk about, you know, dates, maybe thinking about an extra meeting if we need it to have an optional date. That, that would be a nice to work in.
Meredith, just, Tim, your, your email, you were also suggesting another meeting in April in, in your email?
Yeah. I, I, I mean, just the general concept of a or perhaps multiple extra meetings. Just to kind of keep that on, on people's, you know, radar. So it really is up to you. And I think the progress of the hearing will kind of be dictated by events on the ground, I think.
Okay.
Great. Yeah. So we'll be looking forward, looking ahead to those. We'll, we'll have a lot going on.
And also, sorry, just one more thing. I know it's in the mixes and we'll be talking about, but just in terms of schedule is the zoning, the codification, the recodification. And we know how important that is to people, certain people in particular, like Joe Crandall and Sue Galvin. So we want to make sure.
That's on the agenda tonight, Cheryl. That's on later.
But I just wanted to also, it won't be, we won't be done with it tonight, Meredith. I just wanted to make sure that we have time for that in our upcoming meetings as well.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So then we can move on to Tim, your staff update.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief because we've got a pretty full agenda. We've been talking about upcoming public hearings. We've got an agenda item on our MBTA communities public forum that we've scheduled for the sixteenth. Just a little bit of news, we've, we've gotten two responses so far to our East Milton RFP, which is great. We won't be opening those until Thursday at noon. So cross your fingers that we got some good proposals. There, there are two really good, really reputable firms. So hopefully we'll have, we'll have some, some good choices. One thing that we'll see what happens. We, we did not put a not to exceed price in the RFP, which, which is a choice. You can, you can do it both ways. But, but that was, that was a question that we had gotten, you know, in terms of, you know, what's the not to exceed on, on this project? And I, I think, you know, my thinking and kind of not making that particular recommendation was I, I just don't know how much these things cost. And I, I didn't want to, you know, recommend to the board, okay, we have X number of dollars. Let's put that in. You know, these proposals tend to drift towards the not to exceed. You know, but all of that being said, we have the fifty thousand, well, the forty thousand dollar grant, the ten thousand dollars in matching funds from MPIC, a fifteen thousand dollar private grant from the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, so I, I think that's a fair amount of money. We'll see what the cost proposals are. The planning board also has accounted for a budget for fiscal twenty-three. So that's just one thing that, you know, just to keep an eye out for when we open these responses. The procurement that we did enables the board to use the selection criteria in the RFP to make a potentially non-price related choice. So we're not required to take the lowest bidder. You know, we can, we can use the selection criteria that run the RFP. One thing to think about, and I know it kind of is, you know, life comes at you fast, you know, this time of year, I suppose. Josh and I are going to be looking through the responses on Thursday afternoon for the, the minimum selection criteria, which is kind of, you know, checklist in form. Just make sure all of the submission materials are in. If they're not, then you're out. But it's going to be up to the board to decide if they want to bring in any firms to do interviews. You know, you know, and that'll be based on an evaluation of, of the other selection criteria. So you'll sort of rank the responses, you know, based on the criteria that in the RFP and you may decide, you know, it's, this is a close call. We want to bring people in. It may not be close and you may just say, this is a slam dunk. We're going to bring, you know, we're going to, we're going to bring this firm in. So that's, you know, will, will, once the responses are all in and, and maybe we'll get a few more before the deadline on Thursday. We will send them out to the board and we'll try to give you a little bit of a playbook for kind of what the next steps are. But just, you know, with the understanding that you know, we, we may need to schedule a session probably exclusively for interviews if, if that's the board's prerogative. But I think that's something that we can decide on, you know, probably next week. Cause I think you'll, you'll have all the responses in time to review them, you know, for the February ninth meeting. So.
So you'll send those out to everybody?
Yeah. So we, we, we open them at, at twelve oh one on Thursday and then we'll get them out as soon as, as soon as we get those uploaded. That, that's it for now. But if I think of anything else, that we've got enough agenda items to, I think, cover everything that I would want to cover.
That's great news, Tim. And I just wanted to reiterate, Tim, if you could, the MBTA, our community forum, which is scheduled, we've scheduled it for February sixteenth. Have you selected a location or where are you thinking? Because I think it could be a, a sort of a large turnout for this.
So we're, we're doing it remote this time. Just we have, and we will talk about this a little bit later. You know, we have some, some polling questions and we have some materials that is just, it's just easier to manage that stuff remotely. Especially, you know, in, in our kind of estimation as a kind of first educational meeting. I think once it gets a little bit warmer, I think we're, we're going to want to get outside and we're going to want to sort of do, you know, maybe we could do something, a sort of a tour of the neighborhood and maybe, you know, stop by Shields Park for some Q and A and discussion. But I think just to sort of, you know, get this first one kind of on the books and kind of get the information out there. We just thought, you know, doing it remotely, you know, would be, would be best. But I think, you know, in the future, we'll definitely want to mix it up with, you know, again, site visits, you know, find a central location, whether it's the council on aging or, or elsewhere. The, the other thing, you know, council on aging, that room gets a lot of use and we want to make sure that, you know, we wanted to be nimble in scheduling this thing so we could get it done, you know, earlier rather than later. So, you know, the, the next thing that we do, you know, we'll have a little bit more time to, to kind of, you know, do the, do the logistics and kind of think about the format of it and, and give Christine Stanover on council on aging, you know, enough time. So that's the thinking behind that right now.
Great. And how will you publicize that forum?
So we town website, town social media. We had a thought to Josh, and we'll talk about this in a little more detail a little bit later. You know, Josh created a QR code for our for our, we, we put together a survey and we'll kind of walk through that survey as well. But you know, our thinking was, you know, posting at the MBTA stations, you know, and maybe some other kind of public locations, you know, along, you know, that area. You know, obviously the web-based publicity is, is something that, you know, goes wherever it goes. But I think kind of focusing in on, on that transit area in terms of physical materials, we thought would be helpful. And, you know, we may talk to some of the businesses and see if we can get some, some flyers up in the windows.
Terrific.
Any other ideas also are totally, you know, obviously welcome and you should all tell your friends to come.
Thank you very much. That's great.
Meredith, just before we move on further, I just wanted to mention I am not available for the ninth. I, I thought I had mentioned it a while ago, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not here next week. So I won't be able to participate in Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah. I know. I'm sorry, Sean. And I think we had, we were looking at that, I think, before we had received all the materials at four forty. So we were thinking it was just twelve hundred Rush Hill Road was the public hearing being continued. But but it would be great if you can watch that, the overview of that presentation so that you can participate. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and Sean, as long as you watch the recording and you just sign a form, you're still eligible to vote in that hearing. So you should be all set.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I can do that.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we can now introduce our citizens speak. And I do see a few hands. There's a gentleman, David Venizia, who had his hand up first. Josh, if you could bring him and welcome David to speak.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to try to go through it relatively quickly and stay on point with those points that I felt were critical. So it's apparently an issue with some floodlights that I have in my backyard. And they actually light the area beyond my backyard, the area where parkgoers walk to and from the park. We have a problem, however, doesn't appear that it's been in any way violent, but we have a problem with people congregating in the parking lot at Turner's Pond. And the police address it case by case. That is, if one calls and reports that there's people there after dark, they will go down. Otherwise they don't have a typical routine to drive through. And I was, I still am working with the police to see if that would be feasible. The other thing that was looked at is Kevin from the park department. I've also been working with him. Let me just quickly define what the problem is. So we could all be on the same, same page. Okay. So there's four floodlights. The issue is that we have experienced peak and toms at the back of our house at the fence. The police have been called and there was one time in particular that the gentleman was very cooperative. They called him a homeless man. I'm not sure. I didn't realize that there was such thing in Milton, but it was very scary. And what happens is people park, first of all, no one's supposed to be there after dark. So after dark, people will park there and congregate and it's almost daily. But what they also do is before I had the floodlights, it would sort of kind of make their way behind my home because behind my home is where the bench and it's sort of like the main area of the park. There's bench seating, there's rocks and so forth. So since I put the lights, they haven't been doing that. So the lights are there for security. And I don't know that they're affecting anyone or anything negatively. However, I have heard that some people are very passionate about eliminating them. And I have always said, and I still feel the same way, I'll do what we think is appropriate and necessary. I have, I have never thought differently. I don't want to go against the grain. I don't want to create problems, but I also don't want to be feeling insecure in my own home as a result of people congregating behind my home. Because like I said, they drift over for one reason or another. And that's no longer happening. Thank God. So I have two little kids. I'm a single, single dad. Seven and eight, and they are seven and eight years old. So these lights go on at dusk and they go off when my kids go to bed. And for the most part, I turn in at the same time. So this, this, three to four hours that these lights are, are on. And admittedly, they are, they are very bright. However, though, let me really stick to the point. I sort of introduced this with, let's define the problem. Who is being hurt or affected? Okay. So there are no affected residents whatsoever. My, my home faces, backside faces upon and my neighbor to the right is not in any way affected. He's actually back about thirty feet and of course to the right. So there is no exposure to the sky because of the heavy trees. Some people would say, well, you know, it goes to the sky and it causes birds to sort of get disoriented or whatever. So I, I've done the research and one of the issues that were an issue of the fact that the tree line does not allow it like to reach the sky. That's what answers that question. There are no legal park visitors affected. What I mean by that is anyone that is there overnight is breaking the law, right? So if someone's saying, oh, I go by there and hurts my eyes. Well, they're not supposed to be there after dark, number one. And if that were the case, because the light is bright, should we take steps to eliminate the security because somebody who was already breaking the law is complaining that it might bother their eyes? And why would one stand there for an extended period of time allowing it to bother their eyes? I, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So let me finish up with these bullets. The pond is not affected as the lights are ground level, lights sit on the ground. And so because of the natural terrain, the lights are cut off by the, the hill and they never actually reached the water. And from the water, you can't see them if you're on the ground, if you will. So what I mean is between the lights and the water, there's a hill. So nothing in the water is seeing lights. Apparently the parks department has no issue with the lights as the department has actually added lighting to the park's entrance last year. The town is adding lighting and then meeting to reduce these meeting, this meeting to reduce the same. Kevin Crimson, which is the park director, he and I have been speaking for over a year and a half now about this. And the only thing we've been tossing up is additional lighting and Kevin feels that, or felt at one point that something with a motion sensor would be appropriate in hopes of reducing the attractiveness of parking there after, after dark. So essentially my point is the right hand is trying to add lighting and has successfully done that already. And then the left hand is saying it's too much lighting. Just a, just one more issue of the that is a little contradictory and difficult to understand. Okay. Individual Milton police have actually complimented the lighting, remarking that they see less park visitors in the vicinity of the park's primary section adjacent to the parking lot. Just an FYI. And you're welcome. Since the installation of the security lights, my family has not experienced any peaking toms. As in the past, when the police had to get involved, remove them. My family feels far greater comfort as the lights have pushed the after dark lawbreakers remain in the parking lot. It's the lot as opposed to drifting to darker, equally dark areas. I have selections there behind my home. If the lights are removed, lawbreakers, because they are breaking the law, right? They're, they're after, after dark. Will migrate back over to behind my home where the dark masks them and their potential deviant ideas. The last one, the town does not, oh, this is not meant to be controversial induce controversy, but the town does not own the property, right? It's a state property. And maybe we have a charter as Milton residents or administration has a charter to manage the park to some degree. But how would a bylaw for Milton be applied as a result of a concern that's not on Milton property? I don't know, Mike. You know, I consulted with an attorney today because of that question. And maybe you guys already know, you might've already been through it, but I think it's a good question. It's a state property. And there's nobody there. There's nobody affected. There's no animals directly affected. So I'm not quite sure what the problem is. If you, if you, if you know what I mean, no one has specifically said, well, this is the problem, or even generally, to tell you the truth. The only thing I have heard is they want to be shut. And so I want to work with everybody who, who was interested in coming up with a resolution. I don't feel the people who have so far been involved, since they haven't contacted me even once. I don't understand how they then would appear sincere in trying to come up with a resolution that works for everyone.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I do appreciate all those comments. We, we just have a big agenda tonight. So I didn't want to cut you short, but is.
I understand. Thank you actually for allowing me that much time. I think I wasn't expecting that it would be.
Thank you.
Maybe I could disseminate this to, to you guys at some point, maybe.
Yes, you can get in touch. Yeah. Tim, you can get in touch if you want to reach out to Tim in the planning department.
And.
The planning department?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And, and just, just for the board's edification, we, we did get an email through the chat administrator's office from Mr. Venizia. That came in a little bit late, so I just forwarded. That came in a little bit late, so I just forwarded to you, that's should be in your inboxes.
Terrific, Tim, thank you. Okay, so the next, I we have Jim Helton. I believe is the next person who has his hand up. Jim, go ahead. And if you could please state your address, and I'm sorry, I. Didn't get the previous address, but. We can look that up. Jim? I think you're muted. Jim? You can speak if. You're unmuted now. Go ahead, Jim. In a minute. Think you may be having problems with your audio. You're muted again. Jim, if it's okay, we can take the next speaker and then come back to you. Why don't we let Ellen? Who has her hand up? And then we'll come back to Jim.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, my name's Ellen Stoddard, I live at two fifty one Canton Avenue. And I'm speaking actually tonight in support of the outdoor residential lighting bylaw. I had circulated a letter within the community during the last week and I have already received. Eighty signatures, I will send the letter to to you all this evening after the meeting. I essentially asked people to email me if they were in favor of the bylaw. And during that process, I became aware of at least ten sites around town where people were. Enduring sort of a nuisance of poorly placed lighting, in addition to the Turner's Pond situation, there are a variety of other areas. Throughout town where people are. Trying to either resolve these situations. Neighbor to neighbor, or they're just sort of suffering in silence because they don't want to stir things up with neighbors. So a primary primarily residential town like Milton really should be doing more, I think, to. Ensure that that people who live here are protected from lighting that has actually been proven to be harmful for health. I just want to provide a little bit of background on why this is important for Milton. For people who are new to the issue. Massachusetts is actually the only state in New England that doesn't have a statewide legislation, which is guiding outdoor. Residential lighting, so we have to take this issue on locally in Milton. There are fifty five other towns in Massachusetts that have already done this and they have local lighting ordinances, so again, a reason for Milton to jump on board here. And of course, there are a lot of global citizen groups and local scientists. And larger organizations like the Sierra Club and the International Dark Sky Association. That have gathered a lot of data on the effect of light pollution on human health. And also the effect on wildlife ecosystems, so a lot of people have heard of. Nuisance lighting, which basically is lighting that just gets in your eyes and shines in your bedroom and it's unpleasant. But some of these lights are actually bad for health and there are scientific studies to back that up. Humans and plants and animals depend on natural cycles of light and dark. And these artificial lights can can get can disrupt those cycles. I don't think that most people even know that this is the impact that light is having and unless you're a scientist, you probably. Don't understand the impact it's having on the natural surroundings, I'm not a medical doctor, but I have read some of the the scientific research on on health. Things like melatonin production, which is suppressed when we don't have enough. Natural night and then beyond humans, there's just so many things in our natural world that we don't know that happen at night, for example. Songbird migrations and shorebird migrations that birds that get disoriented by. Sky glow and then, of course, lights that are reflecting off of of large bodies of water. So in conclusion, we're supporting this bylaw because we think that it will help to raise awareness among our citizen population. And once it takes effect, we can make immediate steps. To to change outdoor lights, so we can make sure outdoor lights are shielded. That they are at the right lumens level, which is basically the brightness. They're pointing down and not out into public spaces or into the eyes or the windows of neighbors. So I think in Milton, you know, our our humans and our animals deserve this level of respect. And I look forward to continuing to garner citizen support for this bylaw and I also thank you for acknowledging this situation that needs immediate attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen, appreciate your comments, yeah. Okay, next. I think we lost the previous gentleman, but we have Katie Legan. Next. Katie, go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, and if you could state your address, please.
My name's Katie Legan and I live at five forty four Brook Road. And I'm also calling about the lighting situation Turner's Pond. So the back of my house faces Turner's Pond and the lights that face the pond on Central Avenue, on the Central Avenue side. I would say it's probably about a half a mile from my house. But the lights are unnecessarily. Bright. And I've seen them on, I would say many times at two AM, three AM, they're not shut off after three hours, because I've seen them several times. Just by happening to awaken at that time. But having said that, I'm concerned that adding a bylaw would be burdensome in terms of enforcement and would have unintended consequences. To other people in the town. For instance, I have a small ice skating rink in my yard and we have a light on it sometimes at night and I would be concerned in situations like that. That a bylaw would cover something or it would cause a problem. So I'm hoping that we can work with the neighbor somehow to maybe make those lights less bright. Or maybe have lights in the parking lot where he's concerned. So. I mean, we can see these lights from our house very clearly. So they're not just regular. Sort of floodlights in the backyard, they go straight out over the pond. And I do think that they are of concern, but like I said, I think a bylaw might be. A little bit burdensome in terms of enforcement and also it could. Bring up all kinds of issues with lights. So that's. All I have to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate your comments, too. That's great. Next, we have Kelly Lenz Carr. We can let Kelly write.
Hello, have I successfully unmuted myself?
You are, you're in, welcome, Kelly.
Thank you so much, I'm Kelly Carr and I live on. Three forty eighth Central Avenue and I do not see David's lights because I'm positioned in a way where I can't actually see them. I am, however, concerned about. The bylaw because of the use of the word nuisance rather than a definition of what actually makes something a nuisance and I offer by example. My very good friends and neighbors three doors down have some very bright lights on their driveway, which they need to because. The students who are going around the pond to drink at night use their driveway as the current egress since the pond is so well lit up now. And those lights are very bright and they shine into my bathroom. Now, I could, if I weren't good friends with them, I could call that a nuisance or I could go, hey, I don't need a nightlight anymore. Right, so I would love it if we if they do put in a bylaw that we put some definition around what constitutes a nuisance. And at what number of lumens and at what angle and what distance, etc. Simple nuisance is going to end up having neighbor versus neighbor and I don't think it's going to resolve anything. That all being said, just a couple of quick notes, as I said, the lights on the pond have absolutely reduced the traffic, they're coming through my neighbor's yard to get back behind the pond to drink. The lights are visible after ten PM, all the way at the corner of Brook Road and Canton Avenue. And the animal life is absolutely affected, we've had coyote fest here for the past couple of weeks, it's that time of year again when they're friendly. With each other. And instead of them being a little further down the pond, they are now in my backyard. I don't mind, I keep the doors closed and we look out and go, oh, look, there's coyotes, but. There are effects of those bright lights and that was all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kelly, really appreciate that. Anyone else for citizens speak? I am. Not seeing any other. Hands at this time. So thank you, appreciate all those all those comments. We can now move on to new business and we can let the team in from the Highland Memory Care Project. For the discussion and vote on scope of vehicle access egress and maneuverability plan.
So so just by way of introduction, the the memory care zoning that was passed at the. March, February twenty two town meeting. Requires the planning board to approve the scope for the review and analysis of, and I believe it's accurately put in the agenda. Vehicle access egress and maneuverability plan, this is. In in kind of shorthand, the swept path analysis. That that shows different sized vehicles being able to safely come in and out of the site and navigate around the site. Particularly emergency vehicles, you know, the fire department ladder truck as well as some of the larger delivery trucks that that you're going to see. The the board is already taken some action, not on this, but on the scope of the traffic analysis, which is also required by the zoning. So here we are, there are some materials in your folder and I believe that. Is Ned, is Ned in or?
Not yet, he's still in attendees.
No, Ned is in and unmuted. Muted, but I'm not otherwise on the panel.
Did you just allow him to talk or?
He's on the panel. You can, I can see him. You on my screen.
Okay, Ned, you're here.
Great. Welcome, Ned.
Admitted, so thank you and thank you for the discussion earlier about the schedule. One of these, I'll just say quickly with respect to the schedules that we anticipate starting. The hearing with the Conservation Commission on March fourteenth, which would be that Tuesday night and so. We would look forward to hopefully starting. Each hearing that week, fourteenth and sixteenth, and then a joint site walk with with the two boards and then obviously pursue. Each each hearing is as expeditiously as 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 appropriate, given the complexity of the of the project. If I can share screen. Just go to full screen, I submitted. Two. Items. One was a word document. That had a. A description of a scope. Both for fire equipment review and for delivery truck that's in front of you, I noticed a typo, so I have corrected or added the word and. To assure that. Fire, make sure that the fire access, fire apparatus has access to both the delivery area and the parking areas. But that's there, we've done, filed a draft of a swept swept path analysis for both. The fire, the department's largest fire truck. And for a thirty foot box truck, which we believe will be the largest. Form of vehicle which we're making deliveries to and from the site. We've reviewed those both with the fire chief. Fire chief, I speak for himself, but I think he submitted an email that said that he was comfortable with the scope of each. And so obviously, the 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 scope has to be reviewed and approved by this board as part of the. So that the we have, we're filing the proper material at the time that the application is filed.
Great.
And I can toggle from this to. The swept path, swept, the swept path analysis, if that's helpful.
That would be helpful, yes, please.
I will reshare. There are actually three. This is the basic site plan without. The analysis, I think the the radius of the entry is twenty five feet. The width of the main driveway entering from Highland Street is twenty two feet. And then the drive aisles. Coming down to the loading dock is twenty feet. Twenty feet back to the rear. Parking lot areas that are proposed and obviously the fire fire truck has to be able to access each. Has to be able to make a swing around this sort of island structure here and down and make it. With enough width so that there's another vehicle either coming. In and out of the loading dock area or coming in and out of the parking area that the fire truck would have the ability to get by. We did spend a fair amount of time with the fire chief reviewing that. So we do have to assure that a fire truck can make it in. From either direction. Can make the turn. Adequately. And can turn down. The area. Here to the loading dock and then the rear and go in and turn in, it would back this way and out. And then this is the egress action truck coming out. This way to Highland Street or this way to Highland Street. Separately, the analysis for a box truck accessing the loading dock here would come in. Turn in here, back down and then back out. So that's, those are the analysis that we've done, we want to make sure that the the analysis are complete, obviously, in accordance with the requirements of the bylaw.
Great, thank you, Ned.
And I can stop sharing or keep sharing if you want to, if if any of you want specifically to look at one or one of or more of these.
Yeah, what I was going to say, why don't you keep it up just for a couple of minutes? And we could start with the the board comments and questions and regarding the scope of work and what else that we would like to ask for in terms of. Is there anyone who would like to start first?
Well, go ahead, Meredith, that's okay.
Yes.
Please. On the the thirty foot truck. Is that the size that is typically? Found at their other, at this operator's other facilities, so there would be trash, there would be delivery. And sometimes, you know, having been up at the Fruit Center's parking lot in the morning when deliveries are happening, you know, there's different size vehicles there, so. Just wanted to make sure that the thirty foot is is the largest that would be anticipated here.
That's what we anticipate, obviously, as I say in the scope that we have to establish what is the largest. Vehicle and then account for that, but our understanding is that thirty feet is the largest vehicle that would have any need to access the site for deliveries. You know, the Fruit Center receives deliveries every day, it's an ongoing. You know, market operation, this is a much different. Operation and so there are periodic deliveries of food and housekeeping materials and the like, but. The volume of material is not so significant that it needs anything more than than that thirty foot delivery truck.
They have a commercial kitchen, right, and do they? They serve meals at the memory care, right, so do they handle their linens related to that onsite or do they send those off as a service?
I think there's probably a combination. They they'll do some onsite and some they'll 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 hand off.
And do you know if the was an analysis done to see whether a larger truck would be able to maneuver or is this? Showing the maximum that would be able to maneuver?
At this point, we're showing the. The the largest truck. Will be coming, the ladder truck is a longer truck. Will be coming. The ladder truck is a longer truck. It is, it, it's so, its ability to access and egress is actually more significant than the box truck. But there, but for example, there won't be any semi tractor trailers coming with deliveries.
Yeah. So, all right. I think it would be helpful when you submit, if you could show us what that 30 foot truck might look like. You know, so we get a sense of what, what's coming in those trucks and going in those trucks. And then, Tim, I don't. Ned mentioned the letter from, or an email from the fire chief, which I don't, I didn't see in our folder. So I assume that's forthcoming. And the fire chief is the expert on maneuverability on the fire truck. And so I don't have, I don't have questions about the fire truck.
Yeah, I, I've got that email. I can send it along. The, the, the real action is going to be during the special permit process and we'll make sure we get his detailed comments on this and all the other issues on the record. But I can send along his message just for, for your own.
Perfect. Yeah, I was wanting to hopefully see that letter and if there were any concerns that the chief had or possibility for improvements that he noted would be great. Maggie, you had your hand up next.
Yes. So my question was similar or the same as Cheryl. But I was, I think assuming that a 30 foot box truck will be the largest delivery truck is incorrect. So, in my experience, a 30 foot box truck is actually closer to 42 feet in length. You got 30 feet for the box and then you get 12 feet for the cab. But in my experience, I know that the facility cannot predict what size truck the vendor will be sending. I know people can say, oh, you can request a certain size truck. But that is not the reality, especially in today's trucking industry. I think there's, well, not that I think, I know there's a shortage of truck drivers and the concept is you have, you can put a lot more in a tractor trailer truck. And with one driver and sending them all out to do multiple deliveries the whole entire day. So I think we should be accommodating for a tractor trailer truck as we're looking into the future. And I think truck drivers are aging and there are fewer younger truck drivers coming in into that profession. So I think like currently there is a shortage of truck drivers. I also think that the driveway should be wide enough to accommodate two trucks. Because especially if we're going to be looking at restricting the incoming delivery times from like 10 to 2. I think there's going to be a need or there'll be an overlapping of trucks coming in at the same time. And again, from personal experience, you can try to predict and plan for when your deliveries arrive. But there's always going to be situations where there'll be two trucks. So I'd hate to see one of the trucks out in the main drag idling, waiting for the other truck to unload. And if you look across a like Milton Hospital, I think they get deliveries from Cisco for their food services. And Cisco sends in a large tractor trailer truck. And I think maybe, maybe even Winter Valley might get Cisco, but I don't know for that. So I think we should be planning for the future and making sure that we accommodate like worst possible case problems. And then my other thinking is a lot of times with trucks unbeknownst to the drivers, there's a lot of like hydraulic leaks or oil leaks. So my concern is the driveway is too wide. If, if we're going to accommodate for two trucks, then we're getting closer to the wetlands. And so I'm afraid of, you know, fluids leaking into the wetlands. So, I, I think the driveway needs to be pushed back further away from the wetlands. And I just think that perhaps we should get a peer review of the plan.
Great. Thank you, Maggie. Rich, you were next.
Yeah, I just had a question. I don't know Ned or Tim. I know Ned, you just mentioned specifically a 30 foot box truck as being probably the max that would come on the site. But Tim, I just got your email you forwarded to us about the fire department. I'd imagine they're not thinking 42 feet. I mean, they're probably accommodating for a fire truck, correct? How far, how big is that?
Big ladder truck. Much longer than.
So, that's where I think I, I, so I'm on the same page, Ed. So, is what I was hearing then from you when you were talking about a 30 foot box truck is more or less just saying that's what we're probably going to see, but the fire department is saying that you've accommodated for their, their ladder truck.
That's right. And.
All right. Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great. And Sean, you have your hand up?
Yeah, my comment was the, my comment was the same as Rich's. I believe that my comment is going to be the same as Rich's. If we can accommodate or if the, if the plans are accommodating the largest truck, fire truck we have, which is the ladder truck. I, I just, I think that's probably as large a truck as even a Maggie described the tractor trailer. I don't think a tractor trailer is larger than our ladder truck. So if we're accommodating for the ladder truck, we, it seems to me that we should also, you know, if what we have accommodates a ladder truck, it would seem to me that it would also accommodate whatever size delivery truck, whether it's 30 feet or greater.
That's where I was going, Sean. Hey, Tim, is that? Would that be from your group department? Is that what you guys think?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't want to say with absolute certainty because I know those trucks kind of move and operate in, in, in different ways. But you know, the ladder truck is a pretty big truck. But, but to address Maggie's comment from earlier, the engineering department is in the process of lining up both traffic and engineering peer review for when we eventually get these, these application documents. So as soon as we get them, they're going to get shipped off to a peer reviewer. That'll assist the planning board in their analysis.
That's great. Yeah, because that, those were some of my similar questions that I had as well. And especially with the sight line, I, if anyone knows that stretch of Highland Street, the traffic, you know, gets past the police station and it really starts moving at a high rate of speed. And that, you know, that there's ample visibility for vehicles that are, that are entering and exiting with oncoming traffic there. So, that would be great to have that traffic analysis done as well, as well as the, the fire department. I had just a couple of questions just on this. Just regarding snow removal. And I know you're going to be talking about that with a special permit process. But because of the, because of the wetlands, and I know this is a really tricky site and it's pretty narrow and using, I like the fact that you're using the current existing drive. But when you're coming in and pushing snow off, that's going to limit your, your, that's going to narrow your drive unless you push it over into the wetlands. I guess I would love to see what your, the management, a plan for, for how the snow. I don't know if it's going to be taken off site. It doesn't seem like there's really much space to store snow on, onsite. So, I think that's really important just to make sure that we keep those drives, driveways open and accessible. And also, and this may be further, but in looking at what the, the guardrail and the site fencing looks to be very similar and it's hard to differentiate on the plan, the difference in the guard, with the guard, with guardrails. And next to some of the retaining walls, which is guardrails and which is site fencing. That might be nice to be able to identify exactly what that is. And then of course, you know, your height of your retaining walls. Again, I'm thinking of the, you know, the wetlands, the proximity to the wetlands. What is, what is that retaining wall?
Right. That will be, that will definitely be an important part of, of the, of the, of various portions of the plan, including the plans that get filed with the conservation commission. Because they'll have particular concern about how we manage and protect the wetlands.
Right. Exactly. With, with your salting, sanding, what you're doing to the drives and, yeah, exactly. So I think that is all I, all the questions that I had.
Meredith, can I ask? Sure. I just look at the fire chief's email and one of the things that I was looking at and that I had hoped maybe the fire chief would address is it's a little hard to tell in these diagrams, but I, I think in order for the vehicle not to cross the center line on Highland, it's assuming that the vehicle is going to cross the center line on the access drive. And I just wanted that to be something which, to be identified if that is the case. And then if a vehicle were coming in the other direction, so it wouldn't allow for the fire truck or for a box truck or larger truck. Would it mean that an exiting vehicle would cross the line? Is there any risk of having a, a number of vehicles, let's say crossing over the center line or even towards the sidewalks? It's a little hard to see the sidewalk here with these. So if we could have like enlargements and some discussion of that. And maybe it's the color differential that could be done on these that would help us understand that entrance and exit a little more detailed. It was something that was raised before by neighbors and I think we want to make sure that we all understand it well.
Understood.
Thank you, Maggie. You had your hand up again?
Yeah. And I don't want to profess to know the length of a fire truck, but just a quick Google search. It was 56 to 63 feet long. And I know when I get deliveries, a trailer, just the trailer is, is 53 feet long. And then usually the cab is usually another 15. It depends if it's a sleeper cab or not. So usually we account for, you want to make sure that you have access for at least 70 feet for a single truck. And so I just would want to make sure that you can, we can accommodate the largest truck possible. And I don't necessarily think that's a fire truck. It could be, but I don't know for sure.
Thank you. Okay. If nothing else, we can see if there's anyone from the public who would like to ask a question or comment. At this time, I do see a few hands. We have Doug Henry. We can introduce Doug Henry to speak.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Doug.
Thank you. As many of you know, except the new members of the board, my name is Doug Henry. I'm a partner at the law firm Sharon and Lodge in Boston. And I represent Karen Bacardi, who is the immediate abutter to this proposed site. I just had a couple of quick comments to Ned's presentation. One is, as far as the access goes. In addition to width, I think we want to make sure that the existing right of way can support fire trucks and box trucks or bigger trucks. That was originally designed for a residential house. And I think as part of the scope, I'd ask the board to consider as part of the input from the developer that the existing right of way is wide enough and can support the trucks that come in. And my second point, which has already been addressed by the board, is that this should all be part of the peer review process when the application finally comes in. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you very much.
So you just clarified Doug through the chair, the existing right of way, you saying the, the width of the driveway in from Highland Street?
I think Ned, both make sure the driveway is wide enough and that, I know there's a culvert under that, that supports the, it's like a bridge. And make sure that is structurally adequate to support the weight of fire trucks and box trucks or larger trucks, if that's what you ultimately decide the board does to make an entrance into the property.
And construction vehicles during the construction process as well. Right.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Teresa O'Brien.
Hello?
Hello, welcome Teresa. And if you could state your address for the record?
I live at 42 Spafford. So it's a corner of Spafford and Highland. So I just wanted to point out, as Ned mentioned, even construction trucks, they were delivering a digger, I think, one day. And they pretty much shut down traffic because it took a while to get into the driveway. So as everyone discusses how long these trucks are, all I could hear was beeping for five minutes. So I just want everyone to be aware of the neighbors and please consider us because this is, you know, not what we expected.
Thank you.
We see the delivery trucks for the hospital as well, and they are, they are large trucks. So I think to say a 30 foot truck is, it's not going to be big enough. That's it.
Thank you very much. So maybe delivery schedules Ned that will have a, you know.
Yeah, that'll be part of the construction management plan.
Yep.
And, and then a delivery schedule plan, you know, it talks about when and what and how deliveries will be made.
Traffic. Thank you so much.
Part of the traffic, traffic study.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. Next, Kelly, Len's car we have.
Hey, I stuck around after my issue and I just have to hear people.
Welcome back.
Thank you. People discussing the length with the trucks and I have the unmitigated joy of having one child that drives a truck and another one that's looking at being a fireman. So I can tell you that a ladder truck is under 45 feet long. It is nine feet wide and it is very, very heavy and semi trucks can be twice that. They're 80 feet long, eight and a half feet wide, if that helps at all.
Thank you. Yep, that's great. Okay. Next, I see Jean Irwin. We can welcome Jean and then Bart will be next.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Jean. If you can introduce yourself and your address, please.
I'm Jean Irwin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, 120 Highland Street, Milton. Regarding earlier comments as to the width of the access, fire department access around the building, since it doesn't go all the way around the building. The, I, I've been reading up on it and it says the aerial ladder trucks would typically extend their ladder over the roof to get sort of access and back. And this is from the 2018 International Fire Code. And it says the aerial fire apparatus access roads shall have a minimum unobstructed width of 26 feet. So there you have it. It's 26 feet is the, is the width of the access road. Since there's a ladder involved. And if, if you think about it, because the trucks are typically eight and a half feet wide. And when they extend the ladder, they have to extend the outriggers, which in essence make the truck about 15 feet wide and nothing can pass it. So therefore you need the 26 feet.
Very good. Thank.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Rich, I see your hand up again. Did you have a question?
Yeah, no, actually this is a suggestion because I know this is, seems like a, a topic that we could talk about for a while and in the interest of time. My, my feeling is where we're at right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, is that there's going to be some studies done. I know that, you know, we, whenever we build a property like this, right? Like, I'm sure there's some, some work done with the engineer and the fire department to make sure that whatever's going to come on this property is going to be safe. And the, and the width is adequate and so forth. So I don't think we're done yet, right? With, with, with this? I mean, is there more work being done?
Yeah, I don't mean, I know what you mean to giggle about, but, but, but this is, I mean, this is literally, I mean, you know, when we talk about the scope of the study, it's, it's really a question of, you know, are they studying everything that you're interested in them studying? Do they need to, you know, do a swept path for VW bug, you know, and add that to the analysis? That's the conversation. Once we have the full application, that's when you get the full workup of, you know, we'll have Chief Madden and Lieutenant Italiano. That's when you get the full workup of, you know, we'll have Chief Madden and Lieutenant Italiano. Take a look at it from, from the perspective of the International Fire Code and the NFA. We'll have a peer review, looking at the traffic and the engineering. The board will have the full complement of materials to look at, so. You know, we really are kind of looking at the narrow issue of are they studying everything that we want them to study in this analysis? And then we'll eventually get the full analysis.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Tim. And I don't want to cut anybody off from.
That's all right. We just have two more people that are going to speak and then I think we're, we're good.
Well, no, I just for what it's worth, I wasn't cutting anybody off, but I figured if more folks wanted to talk about, you know. This, the pathway, I just, you know, we're not, we're not there yet.
Thank you. That's a great, great point. So next we have Bard. With his hand up, we can welcome.
Great. Thanks, everyone. And I'll keep this quick. But actually, Ned, would you mind bringing up that image again? I just wanted to. Make one comment. Either, either one, the fire truck one or the, or the box truck one. So I live at eleven Spafford Road, which is on Ned's, Matt, on Ned's screen here. That, that cross street that's right there. Yes, thank you very much, Ned. And so our street is twenty feet wide. So I would just submit that, you know, we do have a live test case here because we have, you know, semi. We do occasionally, I mean, most of the time not, but occasionally we do get semi tractor trailers of like seventy feet or so coming up Spafford. And when they take that turn on from Spafford on to Highland, they do end up pretty much taking up all of Highland. And Spafford to make the turn, you know, both sides, you know, with the way the cab swings and the trailer comes back around. So I think it's, you know, the width is one thing, but it's also, I think Ned made the comment about that radius. So I think the radius is also important because in Spafford, we don't have a very big radius and we have, you know, twenty feet width. So because that it's tight there, you, the truck can't really, the truck has to come out across the street to turn. So, you know, I think besides the width, that radius and that entrance there. You know, if there's room to widen that entry, I think that could help, you know, the situation, but that's, that's my main comment. The other comment, which, you know. Came to mind is that Highland is, is a, you know, scenic road with, with no trucks. It's one of the, you know, parkways, I guess, and when we talked to the DPW about that, they had mentioned that that was a state designation. So I guess, you know, as many of you know, you know, we are concerned about traffic on our street and in the neighborhood, so. You know, you know, what is it, what is that? What does that mean? And what would this project mean for, you know, a street that has been designated, you know, no trucks at the, at the, at the state level? Does that only apply to, you know, traffic? You know, what, what kind of traffic does that, does that apply to? Does anyone know?
So the, 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 the no truck or the truck free designation is really related to through traffic. So, you know, you can, you can, if you live or work, you know, I mean, the hospital gets truck deliveries. You know, because you wouldn't be able to operate a hospital on Highland Street if you couldn't get truck deliveries. That designation is more along the lines of, if you're going from Quincy to Canton. You know, you, you can't go down Highland Street. You've got to stay to sort of, not necessarily designated route, but, you know, those no truck routes kind of. Put you towards some of the more, more appropriate through routes through town, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, that's great. Great comments. Thank you. Okay, and then I did see Denny Swenson had her hand up. If we can go back and. Invite Denny in to speak.
Hi, hello Chair Hall, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Denny.
Oh, good, good evening. Good evening, planning board members. Thank you for all of your service. I'm Denny Swenson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. When I served on the planning board while we were reviewing the zoning for this memory clinic. I drove to seven different North Bridge memory clinics around the state. And I took notes on all of these other memory clinics in towns all over the place. And I noticed that with these other North Bridge memory clinics, and the reason I'm mentioning North Bridge is because it's the same. Developer as this site. Most of them had a loop for fire trucks. All the way around all the building structures. So instead of like the design that I'm looking at right now, it went all the way around. The remaining ones had fire truck access around like three quarters or more of the building area. And, and so that remaining roughly quarter area may not have had pavement, but it had a clear path. With open room to run with a hose. And I ended up talking to two of the facilities and they explained to me. At two of these memory clinics that this fire truck access was because of this unique and vulnerable population. So I only bring that up because I just quickly, I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I was thumbing through my notes. Having, having done all that homework and I would just want Milton to have the, you know, state of the art memory clinic plans. Like the other North Bridge clinics do, or in the very least, something that falls within industry standard for safety. Thank you for taking my comments. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So Ned, maybe that's can be something that's addressed or possibly look to expand. I know it's very, this is a real limited site with the wetlands. Thank you. Okay, any other hands? I don't see any others. Does anyone else see any other? Anyone who would like to speak? All right, I think that's great.
I was muted there for a minute. Part of the, the, the building design will also integrate fire access and protection. And that's something separately that we will, we will be obviously working with the fire chief on. Similar to the, the building, the new building that was just permitted at, for Winter Valley. Which doesn't, also does not have fire access all the way around. There are internal firefighting. Components that we needed to address in terms of that design and we'll be doing that here.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, I do see, let's see, Minette Donovan. If you would like to speak.
Hi, thank you. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Welcome.
Okay, very briefly, thank you so much. My name is Minette Donovan and I live at sixteen Spafford Road. So pretty close to the site, I think you, I live near Bard. And I just wanted to mention, as you get into the truck discussion. Not to belabor the point, but I, I did want to mention that. If the trucks exit and enter for delivery, the hospital trucks can enter on Reed's Dale. Presumably for this site, they may come up Highland Street from Canton Ave. And I wanted to see if it's possible, whether formally or informally, they could be required to exit that way. Or at least at minimum not to use the ladder streets to exit because. Informally, it's been requested that ambulance has not used the street and trucks not used the street and. There hasn't been much success there. So I feel like if we could address that from the outset, it might be of great. Of great help to the neighbors. There are a lot of young kids on the streets here, the ladder streets.
Meredith, we plan to make that a significant component of the traffic plan, of the traffic study and the traffic plan.
That's great.
That traffic vehicle, any delivery traffic coming to and from would, would be restricted to coming to and from via Canton Avenue.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did see, Teresa, did you have another comment? I see your hand up still. And Doug Henry's also. You don't see it now, it's off. Doug's hand is down. So just making sure that was, that was it. All right, Ned, thank you so much. Appreciate your coming. I hope that's helpful to.
Very helpful. Thank you very much and we look forward to be back in front of you.
That's great. Thank you.
Take care.
Great. Have a good evening. Okay, so we can now move on to our new business of discussion of zoning articles. Ned, do you want, we have the zoning recodification, if you want to just speak briefly on. On this.
Was that for me?
Yes.
Oh, I thought, I thought you said Ned, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Tim?
Whatever.
You can take it away.
Rich had his hand up, but it's down now.
Can I just ask a quick question? Just in interest of time, we're at nine o'clock. I know there's a lot of, there's still like forty people on. And I know they're here for different things. Can you give kind of just a, you know, maybe a, how long will this section take so folks know to come back or stay on?
Sure. I think Tim's, I think this is pretty quick, this item.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think this is just by way of introduction, you know, we, we just got these materials last week. You just got them last week, so I think we just want to put it on the board's radar and kind of talk about how the town clerk. And, and town council have kind of advised us to go forward in terms of the process of reviewing these materials, so. You should have in your folders, let me just open this up real quick. Three documents. One, one of them is the recodified zoning bylaw. Which is the work that General Code did for us in terms of taking our existing bylaw, which is updated as of two thousand nine. Adding in all of these zoning amendments that have occurred from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-two. And, you know, putting them into a consistent, you know, format. That, you know, works with some of the other work that they're doing with our general bylaws, you know, both to update that will not just both. Update the bylaw, make it internally consistent in terms of references and sections and pagination. And then make it usable in a dynamic web-based format. So the three documents that you've got in, in your folder are what we hope are, are the tools that will, will help the planning board. The warrant committee, town meeting members, everybody sort of start to parse through their review of these materials. So you've got the recodified zoning bylaw. You've got a document labeled explanatory notes, which basically gives a really sort of brief, what I'll call a taxonomy of. The types of changes that have been made in terms of, you know, all of the sections are now labeled. All of the internal references are formatted in this way. All of the sections now have titles. So, you know, you can sort of see these are the types of broad changes that have been made. And you can look through the bylaw and kind of, you know, double check on those. And then the other one is, is what they call the derivation table. And what that does is it takes. All of the sections of the existing bylaw, you know, starting with section one definitions. And tells you the location in the new recodified bylaw. So just looking at it, just by way of example. Section one definitions in the existing bylaw is now chapter two seventy-five, article one in, in the new bylaw. So this is a way that if you are so inclined and, and, you know, will be going through this exercise as a staff. To sort of open up section one, look at article one and kind of compare them side by side to confirm. You know, that they are in fact, you know, the, the same, you know, the, the same language. The, the, the assurance that we've gotten from General Code is that. There are no changes to language, there are no changes to content, there are no changes to style. To the point even that grammatical errors and spelling errors and punctuation errors actually, actually remain. You know, that's how, that's how serious they are about not making any, any of those, you know, changes to the language. So we are in the process, I've, I've built it, I'm just waiting for town clerk, town administrator and town council to sign off. We've built a website that will be pegged to the planning board page. That has sort of a breakdown of a little bit of the history of this project and a sort of. Description of these types of documents and how people can read them and start to begin to understand them. So we're going to, we're going to hopefully have that website go live in the next day or so. That'll be disseminated through all the usual channels. We'll make sure, you know, through the town clerk, the town clerk's office. That those materials get to town meeting members, hopefully as soon as this week. And then get the process moving with the warrant committee. You know, at that point, it becomes, you know, this is a zoning article, so the planning board will need to hold a public hearing. You're going to review it in the way that you see fit and we're happy to assist you and facilitate in that process in any way. You know, the, the ultimate kind of theory behind the way that we're proceeding with this is. We, we need to get the bylaw updated and we need to get it into a form that is, is more. Usable and more searchable and dynamic to, to further the goals of. I, I, I forget which, which town meeting was, it might have been in twenty seventeen. But it was the article that basically authorized the town clerk to do this work. You know, and so in order to not just do that, but be in a position to continue to keep the bylaws updated and clean and tidy. You know, we need to get this work done. Step two, if the town is so inclined. And the planning board has something to say about that and town meeting obviously has something to say about that is to kind of pop open the hood. And look at the actual content of the zoning bylaw, you know, and there are a lot of ways to think about the content. You know, do we want to, you know, consolidate all the setback information or, you know, put this here and put that there? It's, it's open season if, if, if the town wants to change its zoning in that way. But having this as, as a tool for town meeting members, the planning board, property owners, developers, anyone. That needs to actually use our zoning is really important. So those are the materials. We'll have to work on the town, the town meeting schedule and getting a public hearing on the books. And then obviously, I'm sure there'll want to be, you know, some level of discussion before a public hearing, but. We're reviewing this as a staff. We have, we have the utmost trust in, in, in General Code. They're professionals. They do this all the time. But obviously, you know, we want everyone to have their eyes on this to make sure that it's the, the type of product that, that we want, so.
So, yes, Maggie, you had a question?
Yeah, so basically that was my biggest question was, are we a hundred percent relying on General Code? And assuming that they're. Doing it one hundred percent correctly? And do you and Josh really have time? To read it and are you really going line by line? To make sure that there aren't any mistakes? Because I know that document that you sent is like two hundred pages and I haven't had a chance to read it yet and I don't know if I would be able to read all of it and make. Corrections. So I just want to make sure that you guys are prepared and have enough staff to do it.
So the, the answer to the first question is, is again, you know, we, we chose General Code because they're a reputable firm. And we think they do a good product, but you know, obviously this is, you know, this is going to be the zoning. And so, you know, we're ultimately as, as a staff and as a planning board and as a town, you know, responsible for making sure that. It is what we need to be. And so. We're going to kind of roll up our sleeves with the town clerk's office and figure out the best way to kind of divide the labor of. Of reviewing this and making sure that all those, all those changes that General Code said were made, were made. And that additional changes were not made. So I am confident that at a staff level, we'll be able to. To make a recommendation and to be able to put the planning board in a decision, in a position to make, to make a decision. I can't tell you exactly how we're going to do it just yet. We'll have to figure it out, but between, between myself, Josh and the clerk's office. I, I think we've got enough hands to, to kind of get the job done. And to say, to say nothing again. You know, I'm, I'm hope, I'm not depending on town meeting members in the warrant committee, but I'm sure they're, they're all going to want to kind of get their. Magnifying glasses out and take a look at this as well, so.
So I also was wondering, are we, is it possible that maybe we send it over to the bylaw review committee? Would they have? Time to help you? Or have you asked if they're even willing to do it?
So the, the, the town, the town clerk has been in contact with the chair of the bylaw review committee about this. And so they'll be. You know, they'll, they'll be coordinating on, on any kind of assistance or role that the bylaw review committee. you know, they'll, they'll, they'll be coordinating on, on any kind of assistance, um, or, or role that the bylaw review committee is gonna have in the review of, of, of this. I think, um, you know, the bylaw review, I, I, I don't want to speak for them. They do have, they, they do have a lot on their plate. Um, and so, you know, to the extent that, that, that they want to be a part of this, um, they can, they'll, they'll, they'll be coordinating with the town clerk on that.
I would suggest, if I may here, that, um, you know, our building commissioner, who's probably the most familiar with the zoning code and also the ZBA, um, who works with this code all the time, you know, also take a, take a look at it.
Cheryl, we'll, we'll ask, um, my, my experience is that the ZBA tends to be pretty hands-off on these things. They will take the product that we give them and they will render decisions based on it. They've, they've tended not to want to get in the mud with us in terms of changing the zoning. But, but we will, we'll, we'll definitely give them the opportunity if, if they're, if they want to avail themselves of it to, um, to contribute. So for sure.
And I think, Tim, it's important to, um, acknowledge that by doing this, this will allow Sue Galvin to certify our bylaw, our zoning bylaws, correct, which she currently cannot do unless we go through this process. So that's very important. Great. So stay tuned and we'll wait to hear, Tim, just sort of your game plan on this and, um, we'll get a public hearing scheduled for this to get to town meeting. Okay. Terrific. Um, and thank you everyone for your patience who is on waiting. We're trying to move the agenda as quickly as possible. The next, um, zoning issue, um, that we have, um, before us is lighting. And I think we can bring in Arthur Doyle and Erin Bradley. Welcome them.
Hi, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Erin.
Thanks so much. I'm gonna let, um, my chair speak first, obviously. So I'll wait till he, he's here.
Okay, great.
I'm now unmuted. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for having us. And it's a pleasure to be with you, members of the planning board. I'll provide, um, a little bit of background. Again, I'm Arthur Doyle, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven and Conservation Commission Member, eighty-five Belcher Circle. And, um, we came before you this evening with a possible solution to a matter of some community interest and concern, lighting interference. Several years ago, uh, before her untimely death, Milton Conservation Commission Member Judith Darrell Kemp brought to the commission's attention outdoor lighting's adverse impact on the environment. This topic became more frequently referenced with the acceleration of advanced indoor and outdoor lighting technologies and reached the attention of the select board as well, particularly when the issue became pronounced in two thousand and twenty-one with a proposal to install electronic billboards at Two Granite Avenue in Milton. Both the Conservation Commission and the Select Board sought information on ways to mitigate instances of light interference. There were a number of outcomes to this particular lighting proposal. Among them were the following. Both the neighborhood impact opposition, notably from the Cortland Circle area of Precinct Seven, which is in the immediate vicinity of the location for which the lighting was proposed. Opposition by other residents from throughout the town as they became aware of the proposal. Neighborhood impact opposition from an adjacent community, the Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association in Dorchester. Opposition from organizations such as the Naposet River Watershed Association, which submitted a letter signed by nineteen local organizations opposed to the lighting proposal. Information on lighting impact and lighting pollution through consultation with Professor James Lowenthal of the Smith College Science Center and President of the Massachusetts Chapter of the International Dark Sky Association, which is the recognized authority in combating light pollution worldwide. And importantly, the finding that while Milton has a signed by law, it does not have a lighting by law. Your consideration is a proposal to amend chapter six of the general bylaws to provide the town of Milton with lighting protections. It was researched and authored by Select Board Member Erin Bradley and reviewed by Town Council. If the proposed lighting amendment is favorably reviewed and viewed by the planning board, it may opt to sponsor a bylaw amendment for the annual town meeting in May two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, Madam Chair, with your permission, I ask to turn, just like would member Bradley, to address the proposed amendment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Arthur, for that introduction. Erin?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, um, um, Chair Doyle for the introduction and thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the planning board for having this if you on your agenda tonight. Um, I'm gonna speak briefly about how we got, how I got here, um, and kind of what this does and does not do. The regulations and laws are drafted and passed daily to protect society as a whole, neighbors in the town or the environment for our natural habitats. The bylaw before you was no different. So I'll start with how I did the drafting. I did not recreate the wheel, just so everybody is clear. The way that you make most policy in this world is you steal from other people that have already implemented things and understand how to do it. So, um, I use language from two other cities and towns within this Commonwealth and also borrowed language from Pennsylvania, our sister Commonwealth, um, because they have both state and local laws on light pollution. Um, in fact, they're pretty progressive around their light pollution. Um, and it's, it's fascinating for me to read their process that they went through in order to pass that state regulation. So the terms and definitions, are standard industry trade language. They are the terms and definitions that define what a nuisance is. So nuisance is defined by the parameters of the lighting, the terms, um, all of that stuff which is in there. These meanings are well-known to those who will be required to enforce them are building inspectors, not the police department. Um, I know there was some confusion about who would be, um, making sure that they're followed. It would be our building inspectors. So Mr. Pondak's department. Let me demystify and explain what it will not do and can't do because of the language in it. It does not impede anyone from lighting the flag at night because that is first of all a federal law. And we wouldn't want to go against our federal laws, um, or any holiday decorations. Doesn't matter what kind you have, you can put up whatever holiday decoration you always have, nobody is touching those at all. It does not stop you from using your floodlights outside within regular standard guidebooks. For example, if you have two one hundred and twenty watt floodlights, those are fine and should be on a motion detector during sleeping hours as it is. If you are lighting up your yard like a runway or causing too much glare for our neighbors, both human and furry, those will be fine. That means pointing them outward from your home. Again, most neighbors are already in compliance with this proposal without even knowing it. It does not touch, I, I heard the earlier, uh, public comment speaker talk about a ice skating rink in her backyard. I have many friends that also have those, although it's been not cold enough to keep them frozen. Um, they also have floodlights that they use, um, but they are turned off at a certain hour. They are not showing, shining in other people's, uh, windows. So those will be fine. It does not touch this at all. The process to date and where we are with this draft language, um, as Chair Doyle mentioned, it has gone through the departments that are impacted. So Tim received a copy of it, Joe Pondak, um, and our town council also did. He signed off on it and, um, has compared it to the other towns and cities, the fifty-five of them to date, which have these types of bylaws on their books. Basically, the way it works is that if we pass it in the town, the attorney general's office needs to approve it. And right now on face value, it seems that we are on solid and clear footing for that to happen, seeing as other cities and towns in our states have done that. Let me finish by saying this is not out to hurt or limit what people do on their property. Trust me, I do not want to do that. Just so that everyone, including those who can't speak for themselves, have the same standard protection from this pollution that can often, can and often does interfere with daily living. When I was listening earlier, I realized I'm a proud mom of former Glover Duck. And I realized tonight that, um, Glover hasn't had any duckling hatchings in the last two years. And I'm wondering if that's because of the lights that are currently shining on their natural habitat that are stopping them from, um, from this, this activity that has been going on well before my son ever attended Glover. So, um, as part of the outdoor classrooms, it's a wonderful experience that these kids got to, got to do for many, many decades. And it's a shame that they have not been around for the last two. Again, I thank you for this opportunity and I hope that you all are able to process out favorably. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. So thank you again, Madam Chair and member of the board.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, questions from the board. Um, Cheryl, I see your hand up. You want to go first?
Yes, I have a couple of initial questions. Um, it has to do with, um, this being, um, chapter six of the general bylaws. But are we, that, this would change, this were a zoning bylaw, correct?
Yes, Cheryl, I'm sorry about that. So I, um, I sent over a change draft to, uh, the chairwoman rough this week, I believe. So originally we were intending to do this as a regular bylaw for the town's laws to make sure that it encompassed everything and, and every, every opportunity for making this stick for everyone across the board. Upon Kevin, our town council review, he realized that all the other cities and towns in the Commonwealth did do it as part of their zoning bylaws. So what he then went and figured out with whether or not the attorney general's office has made a ruling on, on lighting that is not attached to the structure and, um, and if that would be grandfathered in, because as we know, any type of change to our zoning laws, there was a grandfather clause. The attorney general's office ruled that, um, that the lights that are not, are not part of a structure. Outside lights are not part of your structure. So they would not be grandfathered in under this. And that was a ruling from the attorney general's office in twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty. Um, so the town council looked for any other rulings and he didn't come up with any. So he found that putting it under the zoning bylaw would be something that the attorney general's office not only would approve, but would allow us the opportunity to make sure that we were, uh, we were able to enforce it as needed.
Great. That's, that's helpful. I was, that was one of my other questions is about the grandfathering. And then my, um, my next question, um, Erin, it has to do with the question that, uh, a speaker mentioned earlier about a definition of nuisance. And I'm wondering if you came across that in your research or maybe Chair Doyle, um, came across that in prior research. So if you have any comments about that, thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, it's okay. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So to define the word nuisance is really subjective. Um, it's not an it's something that can be defined by anybody's interpretation. The way that this skirts that is that, it is defined by the term that you use, is defined by the glow that is given. Is defined in standard industry terms that will make sure that there is no nuisance. Did that make sense? So like I could say that my neighbor's light in the backyard is a nuisance to me. Well, who am I to say that? You'd have to measure out what those look like. So, so it just won't be a thing of he said, she said of my, me calling about my neighbor. There's actual definitions of what it is that creates a light nuisance. That Mr. Pondak is well aware of as being somebody that has done this, um, and will be able to discern, discern each time that he is called to investigate.
So just for my and other listeners edification, I think there's a device that actually can go out and measure the foot candle level and lumens being produced at any time by the lighting. Is that correct? So Mr. Pondak could go out and actually do a measurement?
Yes, that's correct. And there's a level of acceptable lumens already written into this bylaw. So that's a standardization.
Okay, so it would be easy. I mean, those devices are not expensive and they're handheld as far as I understand. It would be easy to measure, so therefore relatively easy to verify compliance?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. And it would not cost the town much. In fact, if somebody was in violation of it, it would actually bring in revenue for our town.
Okay.
And there are resources that are available. There's a firm in, uh, PBD, Massachusetts that works extensively with this and I'll get that reference to Tim, which he can share with you. And as to the nomenclature, there are various ways as which it's approached among different communities and organizations, lighting impact reduction is sometimes employed. Lighting interference is sometimes employed, so that there, there are ways to address it in such a way that it, um, doesn't necessarily alienate any particular, uh, constituent groups.
Okay, so those, thank you. Those are, um, my questions. I do want to make a, a comment. Uh, I've been on the planning board for a number of years now and every special permit, um, and site plan approval that I've been involved with has included a pretty good look at exterior lighting and being dark sky compliant. And so, but those special permits and site plan approvals are fairly limited. You know, in terms of how much geographic area of town they cover. And so it's, it's been an important, um, aspect and consideration for the board. And I think, um, this would take that consideration to a greater level across the town. It could be very beneficial. So I'd like for us to consider being the sponsor of this article. Thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ashawn, you were next, and then Rich.
Thank you, Meredith. Um, and, uh, thank you, uh, both Arthur and Erin for joining us tonight. I, I think this is a very, um, valuable initiative. So, um, it'll be good for the town once we, um, once we're able to have it in place. I do have one concern and, um, I, I think I'm interpreting this correctly, but I'll ask my question, uh, first and then I'll express my concern after you answer my question, if you would. But in the, in the section that's referred to as the non-conforming residential lighting and nuisance glare. Item A reads, "Any residential lighting fixture or lighting installation that is installed in operative before the date of adoption of this bylaw shall be made to conform with the requirements of this bylaw or removed within twenty-one days of its effective date to comply." Is that, is that, um, effectively stating that any lighting that's been installed prior to an effective date of this bylaw that doesn't comply needs to be changed, removed, e- either removed or changed to comply?
That's, yes, um, member Fahey. So that was the issue that I was speaking about with member Chigaias, um, about the grandfather clause and the attorney general's ruling on that. What this does is allow a buffer of three weeks for residents to get their lighting within compliance. So normally when something passes and the attorney general's office signs off on it, it goes into effect that day. So many neighbors may not know that that has gone into effect. So I wanted to make sure I built something and so they have the opportunity to come and come to compliance with what's been issued.
Okay. Um, I thought that's what the conversation had been between yourself and Cheryl. I'll, I'll give my opinion. That would mean that residents in town that have legally installed lighting outside w- within, a- and without a, a bylaw that dictated that they couldn't or shouldn't, uh, they've done nothing wrong. And I think it's unfair to, uh, impact any of our residents that did something legal to now have to comply with a bylaw that makes what they have installed effectively in conflict with the bylaw. I, I just.
Remember, remember Fahey, if I, if I may, um, bylaws and rules of building change all the time, as I'm sure you know. For example, if you were to put on a new bedroom now in your house, you'd have to have hardwired, um, smoke detectors outside of each bedroom door. That is something that when it was built, it was within the bylaws of the building codes of our town. Now it's no longer within those bylaws. And when you are made aware of that, you have to come to compliance with it. It has to be hardwired actually to your, um, electrical system, which can cost upwards of thousands of dollars to do that. Instead of just painting a light bulb, which, I don't know, on average costs what? It's fifteen dollars these days? Um, so I, I, I want to push Um, so I, I, I want to push back gently and just say there is always things that are changing. And we always have to update when we go to do new things in our town with our buildings. So I don't see this as an imposition. I, I see this as an opportunity for us to get into compliance with at least fifty-five other cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And allowing our folks a fair notice, um, to make sure that they are in compliance. Or if they have any questions. They can absolutely ask Mr. Prandak to come out with one of those cheap little handheld things and take a reading. Um, and see if they need to make a change. Is that going to be difficult from the beginning for Mr. Prandak? I would assume so. I would assume. It's going to be a lot of phone calls of people not knowing. But again, if you currently have any floodlights, I've got four of them on my house. They're all within compliance of what we're talking about. There is no change that's going to happen to that. These are specifically for. Lights that are shining and glaring in two properties that are not illuminating what is directly on your own.
You're, I, I think what you're saying, Aaron, is that the only change that someone might need to do is changing. The, uh, lumen level of a, of a lamp. So change from a, a hundred. I guess in old, in old terms, a hundred watt to seventy-five watts. Whatever lumens were different. Are, are you saying that that is the limit of what we would be asking residents to do? Uh, you know, I guess I'm, um, I'm just considering the fact that it might be more than just changing the, the, uh, the, uh. Um, lumen level of a lamp.
Um, I, I agree with you, Mr., Mr., uh, member Fahey. Sorry about that. Um, I, uh.
You can call me Sean, Aaron. I'm still Sean to everybody on the board.
Um, I am also old school in that I think that it's wattage as well, but I am not an expert in that area. So. From my understanding is yes, you would either have to change the wattage of your light. Or if it was something that was shining around the clock outwards into the open, it would have to be on a motion detector. Um, or the positioning of it would have to be changed a little bit. So for example, if you have a floodlight. That's on twenty-four seven and it shines outward from the front of your house into the street. That would have to be turned, uh, it would have to, A, make sure that you're the correct wattage and B, position so that it was on your, um. On your property so that the glare was not in the eyes of oncoming drivers or anything like that. So if you had external property that was a runway that you were lighting up. You would have to either change all that out or take it down or put it on a motion detector. Those are the options under this bylaw.
Great. Does that answer your question, Sean?
Um. I guess I'm still uncomfortable with what this all means. I, 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 in the, I guess in the spirit of not taking too much time, I, um. Uh, I'm, I'm not quite comfortable, but I'll allow the conversation to continue with others. And, and thanks. Um, thanks, Aaron. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Uh, Rich, you are next.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, just a couple of comment, quick comments. Um, I'll, I'll try to make it quick and interest the time. Um, so just to start, I mean, this is definitely something that I'm really interested in generally. I. This is where I spend all of my time. I spent the last twenty-five years in lighting, um, anywhere from design to, you know, building and things like that. So. I care a lot about this. I spend a lot of time with these rules of dark stack compliance, things like that. Um, I work for an energy efficiency company, so. We do, I do care deeply about this stuff. Uh, with that said, I have the same concerns as you, Sean. The other, I, I, my question is. Tim, you've been quiet for like four minutes, so maybe I'll, uh, I'll throw something else at you. Sorry, I love bringing you in on it. Um, a little, just a little clarity for, because there's a lot of folks watching. Um. So if this comes through, um, a zoning process, it would come through our normal process for zoning, right? We would have a public hearing. Okay. Um, so with that said, I, I like that it's being changed to that. I wouldn't have been. Um, supportive if it just went to town meeting without the planning board, because I do think this has a lot of. Like this touches a lot of things and there needs to be a lot of thought put into it. Um, I wouldn't want to see us just adopt what, just because other towns are doing it. Um, I do, again, do care about these things, but I also know that. You know, there's a lot of things going on between current neighbors, um, and back and forths. And, and I want to, I'd like to see us separate. This from all that and, and bring it through a typical process, which in my opinion will take a good amount of time. Um, I would not be supportive of this going, and I don't know if it was planning going to the next time even, but. I wouldn't be supportive of that because it's going to take a long time to get through this. And I'm seeing you nod your head, so I'm assuming that's the case. Um, but yeah, I, in, in general, I, I agree with folks are saying. I do agree with you, Sean. I, I don't feel like we're the type of town where we all of a sudden make these new rules and say, hey, you've got twenty days to fix it. And it's going to cost you some money. That's going to be a burden on a lot of folks. Um, and so we should be very thoughtful. Not to say the folks that are proponents aren't being thoughtful on it. Um, again, I, I, I spend a lot of my days in your space and so I do care.
And if I may, Madam Chair, uh.
Yes, absolutely.
Which this is exactly one of the reasons why we wanted to come, uh, to and through the, the planning board and, um. You would determine, um, the appropriate process and the appropriate timing. They would be happy to partner with you. I appreciate that process.
Thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, there's, there's many neighbors, as you, I, I heard earlier, um. There's eighty people that have signed on to this petition in short time. Um, I would hope that the planning board would take this up as swiftly as possibly necessary. Um, Rich, I understand that it's a, a long process. I get that. I've worked in the legislature for many years. They take longer than anybody else on the plan. So I get that. Um, I would ask however, that, um, we take into account not only the fact that this is something that affects people across the town. But also could potentially affect any billboard signers that comes into our town. As the, as the chair and member of the conservation commission mentioned. So, um, so if there's any way. Um, at all that you could move this along, it, it was at least my hope that we could try and have this done for the, uh, May annual town meeting. This has been on the agenda for multiple special town meetings now. Um, and the town council and I have worked very thoroughly through this. Um, and decided at the last minute to put it through this new process. So, um, know that we have had other, um. Discussions and hopes. And so I just ask that you all would consider, um, moving as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
Aaron, and Maggie, you had your hand up.
Yes, thanks. I just want to say, um, thanks to Erin and Mr. Doyle for advocating for the protection. Of our natural habitats and wildlife and open spaces. I think your efforts are, um. In keeping with the first goal of our master plan, which is to protect our natural character. So I do hope your conservation efforts at Turner's Pond has expanded to other endangered sites. Um, throughout our town. Um, I know, you know, the town is rapidly losing open space and. Given the development pressures we're experiencing, it seems like preserving our green spaces and conservation land. That we have today, um, seems urgent and wise and ethical. So I thank you for your efforts. Um, I do think, um. It, it warrants a discussion and multiple public hearings. But, um, I'm also wondering. If you looked at the town's lighting bylaw that was drafted back in twenty fifteen. So I went into the town's website because I was sort of looking for the language for your proposal, but then I discovered. That there's a draft proposal from twenty fifteen from the planning board back then. And so I was wondering if you reviewed that and I wanted to know what the differences kind of were between that. Initiative back then and this. And, um, I'm sort of wondering. Um, if you looked into who was part of that initiative back then in writing the language. And I was kind of wondering like what happened to it back then. Um, was there not enough support of it back then? Um, you know, it'd just be nice to have some historical information. Um, so to your point, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I don't need the answers to those questions answered now. But I think if we decide to take it on as an initiative, um, I think that there's a lot of great information. That has been done by, um, previous Milton planning boards that maybe we should, um, consider. Thanks.
Thank you, Maggie. Um, Cheryl, did you want to comment on that? You had your hand up. Or is that a different?
No, um, I just want to make a suggestion. Maybe, um, we can have, um, um, a person or small. Um, working group, uh, that might be composed of someone from the planning. Board, someone such as Tim or Josh from Plank Department and perhaps Aaron or Arthur, um, because, um. I was on the board then, Maggie, when that lighting was discussed. And I have to go back and dig into the cobwebs here and see. What if I can, um, bring at least the information that we have in our records forth. Um, but I think there's all, been a lot of work done already, uh, it sounds like by conservation commission and select board and town council. And so, you know, it's always good to learn from our colleagues in those, um, departments and, um. And those wise advisors at town council. Um, so if, maybe that's a way for us to get ourselves a little bit more up to speed. Um, than just taking it over in a, in a draft form that, you know, they have spent a lot of time on. I know myself having spent a lot, three years working on Milton Village, that, um, there's tons of information that you gather. And being able to, um, share that and pass the baton is really important. So, um, I might sure, I might, um, suggest at least one meeting. Uh, of, of these representatives, if not more. Thanks.
I think that's great. Uh, Arthur, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, um, just two quick comments. Uh, one with respect to two thousand and fifteen and recognizing. The phenomenal advancements that have taken place in lighting technology over the last, and technologies in the floral. Over the last eight years. And, um, that would need to be taken into consideration and we want to have. Whatever is ultimately adopted, uh, addressing the continuing advancement of lighting technologies. And if I may, uh. Uh, going to, um, Maggie's comments about the environment, I very much appreciate. And I'm sure that other members of the conservation commission. Appreciate her comments. And that relates to the timing issue too, and the impact of, um. Adverse lighting, I used that expression, on the reproductive cycle of certain animal flora, fauna and so on down the line. And, um, I ask that you keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We, we heard, we heard from a resident earlier. I, I don't think the coyotes are having a problem.
Yes, um.
Call back, guys.
And there was a Megan Walsh who had her hand up, but I'm not seeing, um, if she's still with us. I was gonna. Allow her to speak next. Um. Megan would like to come back on. Um, I'm sorry, we just are now getting to, uh, the public. So. Keep your eyes open if you see, uh, a Megan Walsh come back on. Um, and in the meantime, I just would like to just. Thank Erin, um, and Arthur and for all of your work on this. Um, this is actually an issue that I have been, um, very concerned about. For, for quite a while. Um, and so I just, I really appreciate. Your bringing this, um, and working so hard diligently on this article. Um, and I would love to see something. Go, go, it, go to town meeting. Um, my concern, what I, what I. We would need is to have some multiple public hearings. Um, and I, I really like Cheryl, I like your idea of maybe, you know, a working group. In conjunction with, with hearing from concerns of the public. Um, I think that, that process is really important. Um. And just the, the, the challenge for me and I, and looking at the schedule and I, I really, I invited Arthur and Aaron because I, I really want to see. Us, you know, try to do something with this. Um, but the, 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 just the timing right now. And I'm extremely sensitive with trying to, you know, move things quickly and, and not, um, delay is that. The warrant for town meeting, uh, for the spring town meeting has technically already closed. I know there is a, a placeholder. Um, but we are, we are rapidly, um, we are looking in the eyes of public hearings for. The memory care, four forty granite. Um, we've got the MBTA zoning, which we are, we have to complete. Um, scheduled by the end of the year. And then we have, we're in the midst of the East Milton, um, doing overlay zoning on that, which is going to. All of these are going to be intense public hearings and, and lengthy meetings. Um, and so I want to, um. Say that I will do my best in, in, you know, in looking at schedules, but we may be looking, um, at a. You know, I was, when I talked to Arthur about spring, I really wasn't thinking of all we have already booked through March on our, on our agendas. Um, for public hearings. So it may be something that would be, we could really have ready. For a fall special town meeting, which is typically when our zoning would be done, um, for a fall town meeting. Um, and I, you know. I always say there's an opportunity for a citizen's, you know, an article, um, if, if somebody wanted to fast track it. But I think. Having, you know, listening to the community, listening to public hearings, um, can only make this better. And, you know. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of thought in, in detail on what has gone into what we currently have. Um, but just making it the best article possible. I just, um, I just. The board should be aware of everything that we have coming, coming, uh, coming at us pretty quickly. So. Uh, Erin, yes, in response to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question because I don't know the answer to this. It's, and maybe this is a question for town council. Um, if somebody does a citizen's petition and it fails at town meeting, as most citizens petitions do. Um, let's just be honest. Is it possible for the planning board or the select board to take up? An article that has failed already previously at town meeting? That would be a question for town council.
Yeah, town council. But I believe, um, that it, that it can. Um, it would be the, you know, if the planning board, if it didn't pass.
Um, right, right.
Delay. But, but with a citizen's petition, that's, um. I think it would be still fine for the planning board. But, uh, Cheryl?
I just wanted to, um, mention that if it's a citizen's petition that relates to zoning. The planning board is required to hold a public hearing. So it would force the board to have the hearing sooner rather than later, honestly.
So, thank you. Yeah. Uh, Rich?
Yep, just for what it's worth and, and you know, I'm one person, but my, I'm, I'm hoping that's not the case. Um. You know, this is a bylaw that affect, that would, I mean, it'll affect everybody in town and I think a lot. Like, you know, not that it hasn't been a thoughtful process, but if it's coming through us. And it's streamlined or, or pushed fast, there's, I mean, I can tell you now, I would never, I couldn't support it because we just wouldn't have the time. Um, again, I'm only one vote, but I do care about this subject and I just, I'd want to see us. Uh, put a lot of, you know, good thoughts put into it. Personally, I, I think you're going to have a tough time. Bringing a citizen's petition that potentially, I was not speaking to you, Sean, but I think I heard you correctly in saying. You know, this could mean that people have twenty-one days to make changes. That's, I've never seen that in town. Um, before and that's, 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 in my opinion, pretty harsh. Um, so I, I think you're going to have a tough time.
Yeah, but I, I think we can all agree that it is, um, it is something that we all care about and, um. Drew Daryl Kemp was one of my favorite people in Milton and anything that she would support, I, I would definitely back up and, and be behind. So. Um, I, I love to hear that that was, um, sort of a thoughtful initiative that she wanted to take on. So. And Megan's back. I did see Megan. So let's, um, invite Megan to come and speak with us.
Hello there. Sorry, I even put my kids to bed.
That's right. Welcome, Megan. If you can introduce yourself and your address, please.
Okay, my name's Megan Walsh. I'm at one oh seven Church Street. Um, and I heard the majority of this and echo. You know, the majority of the concerns. I just want to see if this is passed. How we like put a, a complaint forward? Because you can't just say like, oh, so-and-so's lights are like shining. We need to have like certain. Um, stipulations and regulations as to. Like how you put forward a complaint. And that probably would, would require some sort of equipment. Right? You can't just drive by somebody's house and say, oh, that's too bright for me. There has to be, like, we need the guidelines of, like, the certain lumens, wattage, whatever. And have like a standard process going forward that you just can't submit like a blatant. This person's lights bother me. You know, like just requirements, restrictions and. If this person falls within the violation. You know, like just requirements, restrictions, and if this person falls within the violation and then you can submit it because to everyone's point, this is such a waste of a lot of people's time. And it, it's going to be a, I mean, I, I hope not, but if this were to pass, I think it's, it's going to cause a lot of petty violation requests that require a lot of time for people to investigate. So just from a town perspective, if we, like, you can't submit until you adhere to this documentation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Great. We now have Andy Demato. If we can allow Andy to speak.
Good evening. Thanks for taking my call. I'm Mrs. Park, but who, who's the enforcing these, the violations? Is this, the police or is this?
Joe.
Joe Prandak?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's short-staffed?
My problem is enforcement, you know, you, you could have a bylaw and, you know, who's gonna enforce it? And if it's Joe Prandak, he seems to be pretty busy with this housing boom. And he also has the restaurant special permits in which he has to adjudicate. And quite frankly, I think that department's overworked. So my big thing is, you know, let's do something that can be enforced. Otherwise, it's, you know, a dog with no teeth, so to speak. So that was my only, only comment. But I, I do think it's, it's an important matter that the town has to address with this housing boom and all sorts of developments seem to happen. And I would like to spend, you know, the right amount of time on this and make sure it's done right in one time. So that's it. And thanks so much for the time.
Thank you. Okay, great. Well, Erin and Arthur, thank you so much. I just appreciate your coming. And do you have any comments before we wrap this up?
I'll just say thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for entertaining this important matter and we look forward to collaborating with you.
Terrific.
I second what Mr. Chair just said.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all of your work on this and all of your time. We really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Great. Okay. Great. So we now have a discussion. It's a, in support for the Milton Pickleball Players Community Preservation Act application. Just so the members know and we'll, we'll bring in our guest for tonight. Let me just see, Mary Blanchett, if we can bring Mary in. Just so the board knows, the deadline for supporting letters was actually on the 25th. So technically, they're not taking letters at this time, but I did want Mary to be able to come before us, be able to discuss this, you know, with the planning board. And we could certainly, she could explain what, sort of what their application is, because I believe that has changed from the initial CPC application to more of a study at this time. And we'll allow her to speak, but we can lend our support. We just can't, and, and she could carry that information back to the CPC committee when she meets with them, but we just technically can't write a letter at this point. So. But we would love to hear from Mary and some of the residents.
Good evening, everybody. You guys worked late.
Thank you. Sorry, Mary, to keep you waiting to, to get on.
I, I asked Rob Lavash, Chair of the CPC Committee about the letter deadline and he said he would accept a letter of support from a town board up until a couple of weeks from now. So he's extended that deadline for you. So what we, a group of Milton pickleball players, about 30 people, have bonded together and requested, I can't even talk anymore, have requested funding from the CPA to build dedicated outdoor pickleball courts in Milton. And we, our current application for the committee is for $20,000 for a feasibility study to study areas in Milton where we could possibly put up to eight courts. We had initially suggested Kelly Field or Andrews Park. But they wanted us to broaden our sights to think about other areas. Because those neighborhood, those neighborhoods, the houses could be close to the courts and get a lot of opposition because of the location of them and mainly the noise from pickleball. So Rob had asked me to get three things for this application after it was initially approved. One was letters of support, which we've gone out and canvassed neighborhoods and we've gotten 440 signatures of support. People are very eager to either learn the sport or to be able to play it in Milton. Many Milton residents go to other towns to use their courts. We've studied all the other CPC projects, CPA projects in Massachusetts that many, many of them, I, I would say, I don't know, at least 60 towns have gotten funding from CPA to build courts in their towns and we've looked at what they've asked for and how much they asked for, how much it costs to build them and whatnot. So there is a lot of interest among residents. Number two, Rob had asked us to get feasibility study. So that we've spoken to a couple of firms and we're now working with Bill Madden, who's a Milton resident and landscape architect with Lombardi Landscape Architecture in Boston. And he is very excited about working on a project in Milton. He has already been involved with the, building the American League Baseball field at Cunningham Park. And he has also done some pro bono work in Milton. He's very gung ho about helping out and making sure that we can get the study done and look for places to put the courts. And the third thing that Rob asked me for was letters of support for various town committees, you being one of them. So again, this application, I'm asking you for a letter to go to the CPC to support our request for funding for the feasibility study.
Great. Mary, thank you so much. Questions from the board? Maggie, I see your hand up. I think you're muted.
Sorry. It's not necessarily a question. It's more of a comment about the process. And I know we sort of talked about it a little bit at our last meeting. So I don't want to, it's not about this pickleball proposal necessarily. It's just, I just want to say that I'm not really liking this process. I think it's unfair that the CPC are asking applicants to seek out board approvals. The charge of the CPC is determined, is for them to determine what the priorities are in town. And then if needed, the CPC themselves would actually consult with the boards and town staff. But they really are the ones who should be meeting with the residents. In fact, I believe part of their charge is they're required to hold at least one public meeting to seek input from the residents. So first off, and I don't know if Rich, you know the answer because you're a rep there, but have they, have they held at least one public meeting for the residents to attend? And I just want to further say that the CPC is funded by all of us, the taxpayers. And I feel like the CPC should be seeking residents' input. I think the CPC should create a survey with all the applicants and send it out, you know, through the town hall with the emails that town staff has. It should be posted on the town's website, put in the times, you know, drop it off at the senior center. And, you know, this is a kind of been just giving it a lot of thought from our last farmer's market request. But I just think like as a taxpayer, I, I don't know if I believe that the money should be going into any studies. Like so much money is spent on studies that I want to be able to see something physically get built. Like if we need a playground, then we should like build it. And if we need a bridge over Pope's Pond, then like we need to make it. I just think all the studies should be performed before applying for funding. Like I personally would like to see CPC funds put towards shovel-ready projects. And I just want to see where all of our money is going and like, so we can all take pride of a sense of accomplishment. And I just don't think that the responsibility falls on the planning board to support one project over another. Like the whole town, we all know there's so many needs in town. And I don't think it's necessarily up to us when we have a committee that was formed for this very reason. So I'm not saying I don't support pickleball. I just, I'm just hesitant. I just don't think we should be weighing in on this. It's just my thoughts.
I think you're speaking to the process, which has been confusing. And Rob has explained to me that we're all learning together. This is the first year that they're actually going through this whole process and changes will be made. Rob has only asked the applicants who need feasibility, feasibility studies to request letters of support from town boards. I believe that's three groups. And I forget who the other two are. So it's specifically about asking for the money to do the study. I understand what you're saying about do the study first, then apply for the money. But we don't have any money. We're just a group of people playing. I don't know who would pay for the feasibility study to then apply for the money. And before we have a community meeting, we need to know what it is we're proposing to the community. Right now, we don't even know what neighborhood we would be talking to. So it would be very general. So that's my understanding of why I'm here.
And to that comment, Mary, we did get quite a few letters from neighbors in a butter's in East Milton near the Andrews Park area location. And just great concern because that is such a tight, the park and the limited parking and open space at that time. If you do get the funding of the study, do you think you would take off the Andrews field as consideration?
I don't know. We have to see what Bill Madden comes up with. One of the problems with Andrews, other than, I mean, we got a lot of signatures from that neighborhood as well. So I don't know how you weigh the opposition versus the people who are in favor. But it, the ADA access at that park would be very expensive. And so I doubt very much would be able to afford eight courts plus ADA access at that location. And Bill Madden has said he may come up with suggestions saying, put two over here, put two over at this park, put three somewhere else. You know, which to me seems like that would be more expensive, but it really depends if you need drainage at those locations. What's the ADA access like and what the neighborhood feels about it? So, you know, if we had a place like in the middle of a field, far away from everything, that would be great, but it doesn't exist. So we're still looking for places, you know, I drive around looking at, oh, that parking lot over there looks like it would be good. You know, it's not being used. So I, I really don't know, you know, we would definitely have to, if Andrews came up as a spot that was realistic, we'd have to talk to them and see what we can work out. There is the sound barrier. There is a sound barrier available that you can put on the fence to decrease the reverberations that leave the court that Bill Madden has spoken to us because he's, he's doing a court in Wellesley and they're using that on the fence to ameliorate the cracking noise.
And I do understand the need for a professional landscape architect because drainage is an issue if you're dealing with any sort of a court. You know, a sort of a study and having that professional expertise and having, you know, somebody who lives in Milton to help do it at a reasonable cost. I, I do understand the importance of, of doing a study for, for finding that right site. Not just, you know, location, but, but more the topography and, and the little bit more of the, the details that a landscape architect would be an expert in. So.
And, and how much preparatory work it would take. For instance, I think there's two tennis courts at Andrews, but they're very close to the, where the houses are. And so we decided that wouldn't be good because very close and we went up to the corner near Granite Place, which is really at the bottom of a hillside. So we didn't think the sound would carry up to Granite Place. But those courts, we understand are underutilized. I can't prove that. I haven't gone there every hour of every day. But if we already had a surface to build on or that can be improved upon, it's going to be a lot less expensive than starting out de novo in a field or, you know, something that's not paved already.
Cheryl, you had your hand up. Did you have a question for Mary?
No, I just wanted to let the, my fellow members know, since I'm our representative to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, this application also came before our committee. And we looked at it through the lens of the master plan and the, some of the recommendations in the master plan related to increasing recreational opportunities and also increasing opportunities for people of all ages to have opportunities to increase their health through physical activity. And so we felt as if this application for a study was consistent with some of those goals. And so we voted to support it, but we, we didn't, to all those folks who wrote to the planning board related to a particular location, we understood this application to be that to study multiple places and find if there is a location that would work and not having any particular location in the application. So I just want to be clear about that. But I just wanted to share that with the board.
And our co-applicant is the Parks and Rec Department.
That's good. All right, we have a couple of people from the public. DNA Lane, if we can let in Danny Lane. I don't know if that's two different people, but both have hands up.
My name is Dan Wayne. I live on Alvin Avenue. So I'm very close to where they want to locate.
What is your number? What is the address on?
177.
177. Thank you.
Alvin. Alvin. And uh. It's it's a very close neighborhood. The lots are small, so it would, it would really interfere with a lot of people. I I know it's very noisy. Uh so I'm totally against it.
In that location, in the Andrews?
Well, that's all I've seen.
Yeah.
A picture of eight courts and on the on uh. Andrews Park.
So Meredith, can can you be clear? And maybe Mary can be clear that this is not a proposal for a location at Andrews. That's not what we're discussing supporting.
Correct.
That's correct.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Sorry. So the the original application, so just to be clear for everybody that's watching, the original application. Um was for the pickleballs and I believe Mary correctly from wrong, it you it was for Andrews, but also. If I remember the meeting that you guys were in, but you were open to, you know, other locations in the town, so. I believe that's true unless something has changed. And then my next comment would be. The feasibility study, I guess this would be a question, feasibility study would be feasibility of all of our parks and where would you put it? So. It's not that you're looking for it specifically in maybe Andrews Park right now. But the reason why I think you said it's not off the table is because it's a feasibility study, so it could go in any one of our parks. So just want to make that clear because while you're not looking for support right now for Andrews Park. Ultimately, it's supporting any one of those parks.
Yeah, that's right.
Great. Um Sean, you had a question?
Guess, I guess I'll make a comment and then and then I'll ask my question. Uh my comment is that based on what I'm hearing about the noise of pickleball and proximity to residents. Sounds like it would have been a great application to put this on the deck over the expressway. But since that ship has probably sailed, um my my question is. What i- is there a proposal uh for, I I I share Maggie's concern. Now, I also recognize the value in um in. In in what a study would give us because wherever they go, we need to make sure that we're making a good decision. Because there'll be an investment of dollars to build courts if we get to that point in time, but. Um wha- what is the services that, you know, was it outlined or is is the request? Meredith, can you can you help me and be specific, the twenty thousand dollars that's being asked? Is the definition of what those services are, or is it just?
Yes, and it's a and and it's a specific proposal um that's been put through um by Mr. Madden. Um who who would go through, you know, his, it's basically a. A bill of of what he would in itemize um list of what he would do. And Mary, you can. Add to that if you want, but it's it's specific tasks that are underlined and broken up.
Yeah, it would include um site drawings of the proposals and what it would. Uh entail to build them, how much it would cost and a timeline.
And and also some um comments in terms of. The engineering challenges. I I know you mentioned drainage earlier, which is which is an obvious concern.
That's what I mean about what it would take to build them, what um barriers or, you know, expenses would be incurred. Um he said the scope of services he would perform be a design study. The proposed schedule, a concept sketch. Um indicating court locations, walkways, citing and planning, landscape plan, development. Preliminary budget and project scope review. And uh just to go back, you know, I thought about the expressway park there as well. The problem with that, I think, would be parking, and that's another consideration of all of these places. You know, Andrews doesn't have a lot of parking, neither does Kelly. You know, there's no parking in East Milton. So there's concerns.
All right, um Danny Lee Lane still has a hand up, and I don't know if that's a different person. Is it?
Yes.
Okay, uh Danny Lane. Uh can we let Danny Lane in?
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hey, thank you for for having me. So the the gentleman who just spoke was my father. And uh so he bought his house in nineteen seventy six, well, he built his house in nineteen seventy six. And it's a dead end on the end of Alvin Ave. And that area of the park is is very waterlogged. And anyone who knows that area, I've lived there my whole life. They know that area is very waterlogged puddles in the summer, in the spring, the winter is snow. It's not the best location. I understand that. They'll they'll look as a place for pickleball courts, but that's not, that's not the gr- greatest area. I I get it, but we, my father's paid tax in this town. Since nineteen seventy six and it seems like this is moving along to be put there. And there's been no say, we've had, we had a meeting on Saturday among the neighbors that about the Andrews Park area. And they're not for it. And I get, I heard the applicant say that they've got. Uh signatures and it's just, I I don't understand. I just don't think that's that's the area for it. We 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 understand there was, there was a big push to have the uh community of aging. To 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 have uh to to the need for pickleball. There's a, there's a big parking lot there. Wh- we have that, has that been explored? Because the area they're looking at, we already, we already experienced parking between. Uh soccer, baseball, everything else. Now you're adding eight pickleball courts, thirty two players. I just, I just don't, I just don't. I don't support it. We don't support it, and that's where we stand. I'm sorry, that's that's where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Okay, um and now next we have Katie Conover.
Hi there. Thank you so much for uh hearing me out. Um I just want to, and I understand that we're not talking specifically about Andrews. I want to say like pickleball's awesome. I think it would be so great if Milton had a place where people could play pickleball. You know, I support that fully, but I just can't speak to Andrews Park enough. I just fe- I have two kids, seventh grade, fifth grade. I coach all their teams, so does my husband. And there are s- we are so limited. In this town when it comes to space where kids can just go and play. You know, pick up a football and play pickup, pick up a basketball and play pickup. Andrews Park is really and truly. One of the last few spaces where kids can go and meet their friends and go and play. And so I would hate to see an opportunity for kids to, for that free play to go away. Also too, there's so many sports in towns that utilize Andrews. There's not an inch of that grass field that is not utilized. All spring, all summer, all fall. I would love to see pickleball, but I can't, you know, I can't be ser- more serious when I say Andrews would probably be. The very worst place for it. And I have to commend Maggie. For speaking about, you know, waste, I don't, yeah, maybe I shouldn't say wasting money on a feasibility feasibility study, but. I agree. If there are places in town where we know we don't want pickleball, then maybe the. Maybe those areas get taken off the table and maybe that feasibility study isn't the twenty thousand dollars that was initially stated. Maggie, I'm with you when when I say, isn't it nice to work for something where you can actually see a final product and have some pride in it? And to be able to produce an area that our whole community can use. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that. Next, we have Joe. OS, oh, and um I didn't get the address of the last, did she say the? All right, we can look that up, but.
Hi, this is Brenda and Joe Oskin. We're at one forty three Franklin Street. I emailed you guys, the board, and um I'm listening to this discussion and and. I'm hearing there's a feasibility study application, yet they're going for full funding within a month. Uh this feasibility study, in in my opinion, how can a month, that be done in a month with that kind of expense? With no representation of everyone here in this area surrounding Andrews Park. I grew up here. My my grandfather was a coach over at that, and then. Taboot, throwing in the comment about using the tennis courts, which I played varsity tennis for high school. I learned tennis over those tennis courts, and to think that they can be taken over by something else at this point really alarms me. So first, how can a feasibility study with the expense of that be done in time? To be presented for apple, for the application of the funds and the decision on that. In in of and a in a good timeframe, in a fair timeframe and. Uh just as wondering how that can be accomplished. And I do agree with the prior caller on everything she said. Well said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, do you want to just respond? Because um this would not be getting a feasibility study done in that amount of time.
No, I don't know um where she heard about that month deadline. It's probably going to be more like June. And when I referenced the tennis courts, I should have said that they would be like the ones we currently play on at Kelly. Which each tennis court is marked as two pickleball courts. So there'd be dual use. That's what we mean when we say dedicated pickleball courts. But if we use tennis courts, they would be used for both sports.
Thank you, Mary. Um Sean, you had your hand up next.
Thanks, Meredith. I think I I'm not familiar with the use today of our tennis courts in the town. Uh I'm just not, I'm not around town during the day enough to be able to say how how much use they have or what they don't have. I I would also make the same remarks into in regard to our basketball courts. Now, um. As a kid, we were on the courts all the time, you know, and and I'm talking the sixties and seventies, so it's a little while ago. But you know, before we invested tremendous amount of money in in a study. You know, I do think a simple evaluation of the use of the courts that we have, whether they be basketball or tennis. And try to determine how much use they're actually getting. And we may very well accomplish our objective of having a place for pickleball. By um making the surfaces that we already have adaptable to play. Um uh multiple sports on them. All of the courts that we have um were were single use courts when they were built. Basketball courts will line just for basketball and tennis courts will line just for tennis, but you know, obviously times have changed. Uh uses of the courts have changed. Um there there was a time when, you know, you you would struggle. To get onto a court because they were, and I was a kid that hung out at Cuny and and at Andrews Park, and uh the courts were full. But you know, I I just wonder if we, are we not considering? Um how we could best use the surfaces that have already been built that we have?
All right, uh next, did you want Mary to respond to that or did that, it's just sort of?
Yeah, I apologize for such an open ended question.
I think that's what they're looking at. I think that's part of what all of this feasibility study would be.
It and and with with due respect to the consultant. It seems like a substantial amount of money for, uh you know, maybe really what we need is some commentary from Parks and Recreation. You know, the 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 um leaders in town that do um have responsibility for those areas of the town.
Sean, they're the co applicant with the pickleball players.
And have they, I wonder have they, have they done what I, you know, had just suggested? Have we considered our our existing services?
Well, they've asked um that to be part of the feasibility study. Parks and Rec is currently involved in renovating the basketball courts at Andrews Park. And so I think, you know, we're trying to look at every possible location because space is so tight.
Thank you, Mary. Are they renovating? Uh what what's, what are they doing with the courts in uh in Andrews?
I think they're um in bad condition. I think they're cracked. And they're enlarging them and changing the orientation, they're turning them ninety degrees.
But they'll remain basketball courts?
Yeah, and I don't think they're, they're going to be ba- basketball courts. I don't think they're taking up any parking spaces by what they're doing.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Rich, and then we have a few more people from the public. I just want to be able to get.
Yeah, I'll I'll go quick and just in terms of time. I don't want to take too much time, but um. Um I I well, actually, I'll start here. Um just for it's worth, I'm not going to be taking a position just like last time because I'm on. The uh CP um CPC committee, and so we would be, I would be one of the voting members of that, so I'm not taking a position, however. Um Sean, I do agree with a lot of the comments you just made, and it's something that I've been thinking about for a while, so I just want to say it now. Um I really, I bet, I don't want to speak for any of them, but I would imagine, or I would bet anything that you could bring the head of any one of our. Um sporting in here, whether baseball, football, soccer, whoever is using our fields. And there's probably a lot of deficiencies our parks have. I know my son got hurt twice last year with foul balls sitting on the dugout. In um Andrews Park because there's no roofs, so and it's kind of embarrassing, just specifically baseball and. Biased a little to baseball because I've coached there before and um so it's what I know. But you know, it's embarrassing. There are the towns coming to us and we tell them they have to use an outhouse or the trees. Uh when their, when their kids have to go to the bathroom. And so anyway, my thinking is that, and I don't know, Tim, you don't have to answer this now, but at a later time, maybe. Again, in the interest of time, what what role can the planning board take? Because I think one of the things that this town needs, and I don't know if they've done it yet, but is to kind of do like. A look at all of our parks and the way we use them in all of the conditions of of the sports. And you know, really hire somebody to not just do studies on one particular park or one particular sport. But just look at them all and si- in are we using them the best that we can and what do, what are our needs? And I feel like, I don't know if it's a stretch, but I feel like the planning board should have a role there.
Planning board has a representative on the open space and recreation planning committee. Um which is a process that we are currently engaging in. Now, tha- that that process is a little more high level than kind of the the nitty gritty details of the physical conditions of our parks facilities. But what the open space plan does get after is a inventorying everything that we've got, so we have a good understanding of of. Recreational, passive recreational conservation open space. And you know, creates that public forum where, you know, we can engage with residents and say. You know, what are your priorities for open space and recreation? Do we, you know, what's your experience of waiting for for a basketball court? You know, or do you have to go to Canton to play pickleball? Um you know, these are all sort of, you know, the the kind of qualitative questions. That will then kind of inform a more detailed look, which is probably a step two in this process. Of, okay, you know, it looks like we need more baseball fields, you know, how do we go about acquiring them? Um you know, how do we go about renovating our existing fields? Um you know, the fortunate thing about the open space plan is once we have it, we become eligible for state funding through um through DCR. And the Division of Conservation Services for open space acquisition, open space maintenance, open space, um you know. Yeah, maintenance and acquisition mostly, um which is funding that we haven't really been eligible for for, you know, a decade and a half. So um you know, that's kind of uh where we're at on that. So that's, that's a process that'll become a little bit more public. Um in the coming weeks and months, um but we're, we're working hard on it.
I appreciate that. And just I, for what it's worth, and it sounds like that is a little bit more higher level while, you know, maybe it will answer some of those. I I I do think that, and and it's probably the Parks Department that would need to do it. you know, look at the town as a whole before we start diving into.
Yeah, and I think the important thing about the Open Space Plan and it's kind of a kind of what I consider to be sort of a planning hygiene kind of issue where you know, you can, you create these plans and then you keep them up. And that, again, it keeps you eligible for funding and it keeps you, you know, in a space where you have a really good understanding of what your needs are. And, you know, then you can kind of utilize that knowledge to kind of further inform, you know, the more detailed analysis that you need to do. And so, you know, again, we haven't had an updated Open Space Plan since 2011. And so we're kind of starting not from scratch, but from almost scratch. So it's really important to do this and to keep, you know, keep it updated.
And what also to note is actually the Chair of the Open Space and Recreation is Ted Carroll, who's the representative from the parks. So he's on that committee. So he's got a, you know, we'll be able to communicate on those issues and.
Yeah, and just again, sorry, taking up extra time, but I think it's worth, Tim, or somebody, maybe Meredith, like, these things need to come out to the public. So like, personally, I use these parks all the time. My kids use the parks all the time. I have no idea what the plan for Andrews Park is. I don't have, you know, our daughter's much older now, but you know, looking at the softball field or the Little League field, I mean, when my son was on that Little League field, it was dangerous. It still is dangerous in a way. And so it would be great to know as just a citizen, what are the plans and who is working on what? And so you guys just enlightened me and I'm on this board. So, yeah, I think more info coming up.
That's, I think that's a great point. And maybe we invite, you know, a representative from the parks to come and, you know, to speak to us on what their projects are and what their capital improvement projects are and, you know, priorities for them. So. Great. All right. So now we just have, next, Mary, you had your hand up. Was that in response to something?
I wanted to say that there are a lot of recreational opportunities in Milton. And part of the mission statement for Parks and Rec is to develop opportunities for older people. And though there's tennis courts, not as many people play, you know, basketball or baseball when they're older. So there's a ton of activities available for kids, but they're also looking for opportunities, which pickleball is really the number one sport for older people. And as we've gone around and looked at the parks during the day, we also want to tell people that the pickleball is played during the day in the morning when the kids are in school. So we wouldn't be competing. Every park we've gone to in the morning, there may be a couple of dog walkers, but there's nobody else using the field between nine and 12 on weekday mornings. So it's not to be competitive with, you know, getting rid of people who are using it for other opportunities.
Great. Thank you, Mary. Sean, would your hand back up because I?
Yeah, really, I'm going to be really quick. I just want, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to express to Mary how much I support what she's trying to do. I don't want my comments to, in any way, Mary, you know, sound as I don't support it. I do. And as a guy who's probably at pickleball age and not at basketball and tennis, I look forward to when they are in place. I'm just looking for the most, I guess, efficient and cost-effective way to accomplish it and for the benefit of the residents of the town. So I 100%, I 100% support what you're trying to do.
Thank you. Okay, and we have Andy DiMatto. Can we let Andy speak?
Yeah, hi, thanks again. Andy DiMatto, precinct seven, town meeting member. And I'm in Andrews Park at least once a day. And it is a great park and you know, tennis courts, I would say, are underutilized. Basketball courts are packed all the time. But Rich sort of stole my thunder there. It was a lot of the same questions I had about the townwide parks and their conditions. But as far as this study goes, is there a component to the study that would have, you know, how this affects the neighborhoods that the courts are on? Is that part of it? I didn't hear that. I think that's an important part, you know, the, you know, both the sound, the traffic and all that. And I didn't think that was in the study, but could that be in the study? Because I think it's a vital part of whether or not this, you know, these pickleball courts go in and there's no acrimony attached to them. So that was one question for Mary. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is there was a very interesting piece on Real Sports with Brian Gumbel on pickleball and its effects of the neighborhood and all, you know, the positives and some of the unintended consequences. And I would really urge, you know, all the board members to watch this and anybody else who's listening because it really, it really showed the, you know, the incredible good that pickleball is doing for the older population that wants to play a sport as well as some of the, you know, some of the issues that arise from it. So I would encourage people to watch that if possible. But Mary, is there a component that would study the noise levels per se if a court were here? You know, how far away do you hear that ping? Because that was a big issue in that piece as well. So I'll get off. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, well, we spoke to Bill Madden about that and the proposal will include proximity to housing and neighborhoods and parking.
Thank you. Next, we have Dennis. Want Dennis to speak?
Hi, hey, Don. My name's Dennis Walsh. I live at 60 Howe. And earlier, my neighbor Jim Pelton was trying to speak and he couldn't unmute himself. We both live, backyard is the tennis courts pretty much. We're probably 40 feet to the tennis court. And if you look at nationwide lawsuits for the sound traveling into our backyard and to our houses, I think it's something that should be taken very seriously to the board in the surrounding community. Jim Pelton lived in Arizona in a condominium complex. And they invested over a million dollars in pickleball. And within a year, they, there were so many complaints, they ended up ripping up the pickleball courts and wasting a million dollars of their money. And more importantly, I would not let that noise in my backyard over and over and over again.
Did that community do a feasibility study?
I'm sure, I'm sure they did. And they probably thought it was a great idea with the feasibility study until the reality of it in your backyard is something completely different from a feasibility study.
We've talked about that. And that's part of the study is the proximity to houses. That's why we didn't like that part of Andrews.
Yeah, if you, there's a couple of towns on the Salt Shore that have lawsuits currently fighting the pickleball courts that were put in. So it's something people should consider.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
All right. And we have Sheila Paluachi. Sheila, you can unmute yourself. You're still muted, Sheila. You're muted. Not sure Sheila is still with us. Why don't we go, I think, Jo, you were a previous speaker? Oh, Sheila, you're, now you can speak. So you're unmuted. Now you're muted again. All right. Sorry, Sheila, we can come back. All right, Jo.
Oh, hi, this is Brenda and Joe again.
And Jo, what was your address again? I'm sorry for the record. I apologize. I didn't get it last time.
143 Franklin Street.
Great, sorry.
No, basically, everyone just pretty much, the feasibility study, basically, I understand the need. It's kind of, it's kind of flip side back where you apply for funding, yet you do a study after you get the funding. And then the openness of, well, we want to reserve all the parks and all the spaces and we just, you know, the not really, no consideration even after all this discussions of the neighbors at this point, early, on the early stage. And I'm a little disappointed in that. But beyond that, it's, if the feasibility study is funded, I do believe possibly the option of having a specific engineering firm that specializes in pickleball sounds be represented in that study versus one company or studying, doing the entire study. I think it'd be more objective if you have a specific engineering company that has studied the effects of pickleball sounds represented in that study in addition to or with it as a secondary source of information. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good point. And we have one, I believe, the last speaker, Elaine Benson. If we can allow Elaine to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, well, first off, thanks for going so late at night. This is late night for interesting topic. But I just wanted to say I greatly support the idea of a townwide plan for our parks. I love that idea. I also appreciate that people like Mary in town who are really passionate about the sports they enjoy playing are putting forth an effort to make those sports more accessible. I personally have never played pickleball, but I've heard great things about it. As someone who lives on Granite Place, I bought Andrews Park and I agree with several former speakers about the feasibility of Andrews in particular. I've had, you know, neighbors that have reached out who are very involved in Milton youth sports and have shared how much opportunity exists right now for our fields in term of youth, of youth sports. That said, I fully support a feasibility study. I think that that makes sense at this juncture in looking at multiple ports, including the existing tennis court at Andrews. And lastly, I, you know, I appreciate one of the planning board members comments about like, let's just get, let's get these CPC projects done. Let's, you know, let's build a bridge. But that said, you know, we'd hopefully never build a bridge without performing significant studies on topography and civil engineering and geotechnical engineering, et cetera. So I feel that Mary's approach is reasonable in starting with this study. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Elaine. Great. So, so the board comments, any other comments from the board? And do we feel like we would like to have a motion to support this? Or what is the feeling of the board? I know, Rich, you said you are not going to vote.
Correct. I don't think it's appropriate.
I'll speak up. I am also, there was a recommendation that community feedback be a part of the initial study. So, you know, I think we could put that into, if we did write a letter of support, we could put that in as a recommendation. I think we'd want to make sure it's clear in our letter that we're not weighing in on a particular site that we would be, you know, interested in seeing a study that evaluated whether there is a good site for it, right? And so, and then like we did with the landing, I'd say we would want to say that we don't want to prejudice any other, you know, application that came in for the Open Space and Parks and Rec component of the CPC funding. I do think that for the reasons that I said before about expanding recreational opportunities for people of all ages that I think are, from a planning point of view, public health is integral to current planning thinking. You know, getting people active is really important part of continued good health. And you have to plan for that. And so, so I think with those caveats and with those kind of notations that I think we could supply a letter of support. That's my view.
So is that a motion, Cheryl, then, to support this with those caveats?
I'm fine putting forth that motion, sure.
Is there a second? Study?
I'm going to comment before I reply, but I also am a proponent of conducting the study. I feel we, we have a responsibility to both those that are proponents of pickleball in Milton. And we also have a responsibility to support those, namely, the group that have concerns for pickleball in Andrews Park. So obviously, the study needs to be conducted without a bias for anyone. And, but I think it serves the interest of the residents of town to figure out where we could accomplish pickleball in town. And it seems to me that the next best step to do that is to support the study. So I would second Cheryl's motion.
Thank you. And I know, Rich, you are not voting, but I know you're going to take a lot of these comments back, hopefully, to the CPC committee when you are making your final analysis. But so with this motion and a second, I'll take a roll call then. And we'll go, Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
So this is a tough one for me. I believe in activities for our older population. My mother is 85 years old. My grandmother lived in town on her own at Winter Valley to 95. So I fully support activities for all adults. But for the reasons I said before, I do think it's a little unfair. The process has been unfair to us. And I also find it interesting that the only residents who showed up to voice their concerns were the residents around Andrews. So I'm wondering if there was just some confusion because it'd be interesting to know what the other residents around the other fields might have to say about it. So I'm not necessarily against the sport of pickleball. I'm just, I just feel compelled to vote no on this just because I feel like we have not heard from enough of the town residents as to one where they want their CPA funds to be spent. And then if, if other residents around other parks would support this.
So is that a?
No.
I know.
No.
Okay. And I hear what you're saying, but I think what the point that Cheryl made is that that the motion is made with community input because I think that's absolutely essential that we hear from all neighborhoods throughout Milton and and that we really listen to the neighbors of Andrews who have real legitimate concerns when the study is being done. And again, we're not the final decision maker on this. CPC is the final decision maker and then ultimately town meeting. So we know it has various steps to go through. And, and I think we're going to see a difference in the process, hopefully, from the CPC next year. Just with regards to supporting letters, I think we've all learned from this. And in no way, just it's not, you know, is this supporting one over another? Because there's a lot of really good projects and these are just ones that we've been asked to support. And I would vote, my vote would be yes to support writing a letter for this. I believe it falls into our master plan. It's a healthy thing for our community, but finding the right location. It's a healthy, um, thing for our community, but, but finding the right location, um, is gonna be critical and doing it the right way. So, um, I would vote and support as well. So we will work on a letter. Mary, did you have one more comment that you would?
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for hearing everybody out. I really appreciated everybody's comments, uh, the community members as well. And, um, they, um, the, you know, Andrews Park neighborhood association is very strong. And, um, they made that, you know, clear. But they, um, I think there was initially some confusion when we wrote our initial application. It was for Andrews and Kelly, and then we were told to broaden our scope. So I think when they first heard about it, they thought Andrews was the place. But, and the people who you didn't hear about, who didn't show up tonight to speak are those four hundred and forty-one people who we got signatures from.
I know folks are very passionate about this, this sport. It's really.
And they were townwide.
Yeah.
We just, that we'd come.
Find a spot and, um, yeah.
We wish you. Thank you very, very much. Good night.
Good luck. Thank you.
Meredith, do we still have something on the agenda? Are you planning on?
We do.
All right. So just for what it's worth, I, if you don't mind, I've got a flight I gotta catch in about four hours. So I'm gonna get off now.
So we do, well, you know what, can we make, um, we just have one quick thing.
Sure.
Did you have a chance, if everyone had a chance, the old business approval of the decisions for the ten Basset Street site plan approval and the twenty-six Woodlot Drive special permit amendment? Uh, we need to get just approval of those drafts and authorize, uh, Tim to sign on our behalf.
Tim, they're short and sweet. I'll make a motion to, um, authorize Tim to sign or execute those letters and file those letters.
Second.
Great. Roll call. Uh, Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Maggie?
You're muted, Maggie.
Yes, sorry.
And myself, yes. And that motion was to authorize Tim to sign on our behalf, so. Thank you, Rich. I appreciate you just staying on for that.
Oh, no worries. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. And we are wrapping up, um, here in the final home stretch. This should just take us a few minutes. Um, MBTA communities, Tim, do you wanna just talk about that? The February public meeting and the update?
Yeah. So we, um, we, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but, um, Josh and I have been making preparations for this meeting. And, um, the, it's, we're, we're trying to keep it as basic as we can, um, you know, just to really give the opportunity for, for people to start giving us some input. So we've got a sort of a ninety-minute agenda kind of drawn up. We're using some Zoom-based and some other, um, software tools to do some sort of in ma, in-meeting surveying, um, to kind of get an idea of, you know, what people's level of knowledge of, of, of the, of the MBTA communities act is. Kind of get an idea of, you know, where, where folks are living, you know, where, um, you know, what, what sort of ideas they have about, um, you know, about our approach. I've got, I've given a number of presentations on this pro, on this, um, legislation. I'm gonna sort of adapt those slightly. But it's really just sort of the basic, just the facts, not dissimilar from, um, briefings that I've given to the planning board and to the select board. You know, just about, you know, this is what, um, this is what the law says. This is, you know, what the options for compliance are. This is, you know, these are the deadlines. This is what our sort of next steps are in terms of the consultants that we've gotten, um, and kind of what our plan is, you know, for the spring and summertime, um, to, you know, continue to, to work on this and to review it. Trying to leave a significant portion of time for Q and A comments from folks. And then we'll also be, um, you know, we're, we're doing a soft launch this week of just a sort of general survey that we want to put out there. Again, you know, getting, gauging people's knowledge of the law. You know, just getting people into our communications, um, basically. So we'll be soft launching that this week. But, um, at that here, at that meeting, we'll kind of blast it out to folks, you know? Please take our survey, get on our email list, um, so that you can be kept apprised of, of any new updates or any new meetings. And then, you know, um, really, you know, a, a, at this stage, just very basic stuff, because, you know, we're still at a point where, um, you know, we have a knowledge of what the guidelines are and we want to impart that knowledge, but, um, haven't yet done, you know, the research and analysis and, and kind of the actual specific work that people can sink their teeth into. So like I said, we're trying to keep it very basic, um, and, and leave as much time as we can to, um, to, to sort of question and answer and, and, and comment period, you know? With still giving people the opportunity to, you know, learn about, about what they, they want to be commenting on. So it's, um, that's what we're thinking. And, um, I, I, I think it'll be a good kickoff event. And, you know, we should, you know, once we learn a little bit more about, you know, where people are at, I think we can start to tailor our outreach strategy, you know, either geographically or, or based on other methods. You know, because, you know, we have in our proposed scope of work for, um, for consultant services through, um, the community one-stop grant. We do have, you know, an element of, of community outreach involved with that. But, you know, we've said it before, we've gotta continue to be doing this, um, you know, throughout. We can't wait for consultants to, to help us out with it. So, um, I think we're gonna learn a little bit from the audience at this thing. And, and I think we'll be able to tailor our strategy, you know, based on that.
Great.
Cheryl has her hand up.
Yes.
Yeah. This is targeted for the entire town or for that one half-mile catchment area?
So, I mean, it's, you know, it's townwide.
It needs to be the townwide at this point.
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear, because I think it's gonna, it's only two weeks out and nobody knows about it. To the point about people saying nobody knows about anything. And, you know, it's right before the vacation. I think we've gotta do everything possible to get the word out. Like get it in the Milton Times, get it in Milton Scene, um, email blast, town website, notice at the library, see if the library will send it out in their email. See if the school department will send it out in their update. I mean, you gotta, we've gotta really do a full-court press on getting the word out.
So that's what I was gonna ask, is this, is there anything that we personally can do, um, to help get the word out? You know, do you have a link to a survey? Or are you gonna create like a digital flyer or a handheld flyer? That we can try to send out to our network of people?
Yeah, we're working on those materials. We'll have that stuff done before the end of the week. You know, first thing we do in the office to, actually, not the first thing, I'm buying a car in the morning, so I won't be in until after lunch. Yeah, no, it's, you know, whatever. Twenty-eleven accord. But, um, you know, for, for, first thing when we get into the office is just, you know, creating that post on the town website, creating that post on Facebook, getting that initial blast out there. We'll have materials, um, that are a little bit shinier and, and, and nicely formatted, uh, with all the information, to go out, you know, to your individual networks. I think, you know, Charlotte, you're absolutely right. Physical materials in, in, in as many public places as we can get. You know, the struggle that we have here is, you know, you can't schedule the thing too soon without, you know, giving people enough notice. But then, like, you can't do it during school vacation week. And then by the time school vacation week is over, it's March and, you know, whatever. So what, what I've learned in my, in my time in, in public service is that, uh, there's never a good time to hold a meeting. So you just gotta have it and, and see where you can fill in the gaps after that. So, um, definitely, it, it's a well-taken point. And again, I, I, I think, you know, we're gonna learn a little bit from, from our audience on this one. And then I, I think we can sort of start to look at, you know, can we do some more geographic targeting? Can we do some more, you know, going to neighborhood associations? Can we do some more, you know, other forms of maybe non-meeting-based outreach and, and input? So, um, you know, this is, you know, step one. But we've, we've got some other things in the hopper. You know, just, just kind of related to this. I'm, I'm availing myself of every bit of money and assistance that the state is putting out there. Chappa, the Citizens Housing and Planning Association is offering outreach, technical assistance. I have a meeting with, uh, with someone over there next week. MAPC is kind of convening all of the inner core rapid transit communities in a kind of knowledge exchange. So that's Cambridge, Quincy, Somerville, Milton, Newton, Brookline. So we'll all be talking to each other to kind of, you know, learn, you know, what are we, what are we all doing? You know, what are some best practices that we found? You know, what are some, you know, issues that I think we all may, may share that'll be, you know, important to, to talk through? So, um, so we're, we're trying to hit everything. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Tim, for that update. And, um, definitely, um, without even doing a survey, we can tell you that no one knows about this. So everyone we talk to, just interfacing, it really is, um, something that people who live right along the line, train line, don't, do not realize. So, all right, thank you. Oh, and, um, Tim, is there any update from the select board on? They were talking about writing a letter, uh, talking about how our trolley is unique. I think in the Commonwealth, you know, in the area. And also, you know, I think we can't emphasize enough that half of our train line that ha, we only were at, being asked to put, you know, twenty-five percent on only one half, because the other half is in Boston. And I think that really calls for, um, you know, consideration for the numbers of what were being asked.
So, so to take that one first, you know, the, the way that the, the way that the guidelines address that, they're sort of, it's, it's built in based on the developable area in the transit area. So, um, there's a sliding scale among communities. So when, when I talk about, you know, Milton has to put at least fifty percent of its zoning district in the transit area and fifty percent can go elsewhere. That's an acknowledgement of, you know, less than half, but almost half of our transit area is, is actually outside of town limits. I actually was on the phone with, um, with one of the planners in Newton this afternoon, kind of just talking through what their process is like. They have to do ninety percent of their district within the transit area. Because if you know Newton, you know, those green line stops are very squarely within city limits. And so all of their developable area, for the most part, is within the transit area. So the acknowledgement of that is all of their district has to go in there. Um, and so that's kind of, it, it's, it's built in in that way. In, in terms of the trolley, um, you know, I've done, I, I've been trying to do as much research as I can. The data on the trolley is not the best, um, compared to other lines, just by virtue of the way it operates. But we do have headway data. Headways are, you know, the train comes at noon, comes at twelve oh five, that's a five-minute headway. It's the time between trains. It's a metric of, of, of frequency. Um, and frequency is really the thing with transit. If the train comes every half hour, you're not gonna use it as much or as reliably as if it came every five or ten minutes. And, you know, what I found from the headway data, because, you know, Meredith, I, I think the, the point about the trolley, I think, anecdotally and from observation is like, yeah, this is a different type of thing from the red line, obviously, or even the green line. But when you look at the actual frequency of it, um, and, and I can share this data, I don't have it at my fingertips right now. But, you know, the headways are actually better than anything except the red line downtown, which has two lines in it. You know, in the peak hour, we have between five and six-minute headways compared to eight minutes on the D-line through Newton and ten minutes on the red line coming from Ashmont. So, you know, the, the heavy rail that we actually feed into has worse frequency than the trolley does. You know, which, you know, may come as a surprise to people, but, you know, this is empirical data that the T collects. What, what I've, you know, we're, we're still doing a little bit more analysis, but what I've recommended to the town administrator, and, and we'll have this conversation with the select board, is, you know, we should continue to pressure the T with every piece of leverage that we possibly have to continue the Mattapan Line Transformation Project. Get those cars refurbished, get those stations refurbished. Because it's, it's obvious that the, the cars are in not good condition. You know, it's, it's plain as day. The, the stations are in really bad shape. The, the, the problem with that is these are just chronic T issues. You know, the, the, the trolley is not catching on fire like the orange line is. You know, so we've got that going for us. I think everyone has complaints with the rolling stock. Everyone has complaints with, um, the condition of the station. So I think there's not as much of an angle there to say, you know, Milton should get some sort of special consideration. But I think it is generally, and I think a lot of towns will say this, that like, look, you're asking us to increase our density around transit. You need to pull your weight in terms of having a frequent, reliable, safe, comfortable service, which I think a lot of towns, you know, have that same argument. So, um, you know, I, I think that's still a discussion happening at the select board. Um, and, uh, we'll definitely keep you posted on where it goes.
Thank you.
And then just in terms of, um, timeline from, um, from UTIL, it, it looks like, um, there'll be some background kind of desktop-type work that they're doing in February. And a, they'll, they'll do, they'll be able to do a kind of a first run through the compliance model, which basically means, you know, we will have provided them with, you know, uh, 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 an idea of like, this is the district boundary that we want. You know, these are the dimensional kind of restrictions that we want. This is the density that we want. You know, we'll provide them with those initial inputs to create, you know, that first kind of draft option. And that, that they'll be able to get that through sometime in March. And, and I, I think the way that we've talked about this is, you know, creating something that, you know, is, and, and I wanna stress this as, as much as I can, and, and we should all continue to stress it. You know, a first draft of something that we can look at and say like, this element of this is good, let's keep it. This element of this is bad, let's get rid of it. This element needs further study. And, and really something that can feed into a cost-benefit fiscal municipal service analysis. You know, so that we know, you know, okay, we've got an idea of what these, you know, this build-out is gonna look like. There may be additional runs through that model. Once we have more information, have done those analysis, do more of the community outreach. But I think, you know, getting something on paper, you know, that the folks can sink their teeth into and look at. And finally, you know, this is kind of the first big reveal of the, the whole, you know, thing. We're gonna have this public meeting on the sixteenth. Rehashing a lot of information that's kind of been floating around for a long time. I think once UTIL is able to sort of spit out a product out of the compliance model, then we'll have like, okay, here's the, here's the thing. And, and, and we'll be able to hopefully digest it. But we'll, we'll at least take some bites out of it. So, um, we're talking about March for that. So I think February is gonna be a big, you know, just kind of outreach education, getting people into the fold and into the conversation. Um, and then March is gonna be a little bit more kind of nitty-gritty, nuts and bolts. You know, uh, detail-oriented stuff.
But not to prolong this whole conversation, but, um, you know, I had asked you previously about the compliance model. So I'm wondering, has it become a little bit more user-friendly? Can like me cup on, like, that's what, what I thought the compliance model was going to ultimately be was, was user-friendly. Anybody could come, hop on and kind of play with it. And when I tried to do that, you know, several weeks ago, I couldn't do it. So has it becoming easier?
No, I'm sorry, it hasn't. It's, you know, it, it, it's, it's tough, like, there's, it's, it's, so we, we have the in-house capability to, to work with this model. You know, with Alan Bishop, our GIS coordinator. You know, Josh has, has more GIS knowledge than I have, and I have a tiny bit. But it, it, it really unfortunately is, is not a product that is kind of geared towards a lay audience. It's, you know, there's a lot of people that know GIS, but there's many, many, many more people that don't. Um, and it really is a key component of that. So, you know, that's one thing where, again, you know, you know, you, you know, MHP is paying UTIL on our behalf to, to do this, and we're gonna wanna have them work the model. I think once we have that first draft, you know, as a staff, we'll wanna, you know, kind of have some back and forth with the board, back and forth with, um, you know, with residents, with the public process, and be able to kind of work on that model ourselves as well. You know, ultimately, um, you know, we're gonna have to have one thing to send into DHCD. But I think in the meantime, that the tool is there and the utility in it is, is, you, you know, once you have it, you know, once you have your inputs in there, it's, it becomes a little bit easier to kind of tinker with it. But it is a lot of very technical knowledge, unfortunately. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a marvel. You don't see this. You don't see this type of tool out there a lot, but that also means that it's just very, very complicated. So I wish there was something easier, Maggie, but there's not.
Yeah, okay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that update and timeline and from UTIL. So, Tim, do you want to just do a quick fiscal year twenty twenty four budget priorities?
Quick.
Sorry.
Quick overview of budget.
Oh, no, come on, get out of here. So the 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 reason I asked to get this on the agenda is that the the town accountant, the town administrator have extended the the deadline for supplemental budget requests. You know, we we've talked about fiscal twenty four priorities in the past, just like almost every year. There's a level budget funding for everybody. You know, in the previous fiscal year, we did supplemental budget request for the open space plan. That was a kind of a really kind of high profile, big special request. They've extended the deadline for submitting those requests. So I I just wanted to get on the agenda and see like if if the planning board is interested in, you know, requesting money for projects above and beyond what we hope and expect our our usual appropriation will be. There's an opportunity to kind of get that request in.
Cheryl, you have your hands up.
Yes, I have one up, but maybe two at this hour. Tim mentioned earlier, so the next step in the codification. And I'd like to suggest funding for at least some rewrite of the zoning. And I'll give you some examples. Some of it came out of the consultant's previous work was not being implemented yet. I think Maggie will also agree on this one. There's some pieces of the zoning code that are out of compliance with state law and out of date. And at a minimum, those should be brought up to date. There's sections that lack the a purpose paragraph, which I think most zoning does include a purpose. To make this more user friendly, I work with zoning codes in other communities. Dimensional tables for your dimensional requirements are so much easier than the paragraph forms that we have. And not only that, we have it in paragraph and you read it, but if you don't read further into the code, you won't find that. In fact, what you think you have to comply with is is canceled out later in the code. So it's it's, it makes it more difficult for our building official to work with, our ZBA to work with and and applicants to work with. In fact, I saw on the forty B applications that some of them, when they had to put together their list of variances, had mistakes in it because, you know, our zoning is out of date. So the other really, I think, big piece of it is we don't even have a comprehensive definition section. The definition of height varies across the zoning code. So depending upon where you're looking, height can be defined from average grade to midpoint or to high point. And so that needs to be really, really consistent. It's one of the first things I look to when I'm looking at zoning compliance from projects I'm working on in my office is definitions. So what's your, what's your lack coverage? What does lack coverage mean? What's your setback? What's your height? You know, all of these things need to be spelled out and they should be spelled out in a consistent way. So that's not like a rewrite of saying changing, you know, a district is not changing a map, but it's getting this code to to actually work better. And so I don't know what that might cost, but Tim, I've heard it might be forty thousand dollars. If you have any idea, please say.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's in the range of of what I've seen for that. And 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 I actually think it's 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 a good idea, especially for a supplemental budget request where, you know, if if we don't get it, it's not, you know, the end of the world. It's an important project and one that should probably be prioritized. But also, I think to Cheryl's point, like, you know, consolidating the setback information in in one place as opposed to seven places. You know, this is the type of thing that, you know, is a little bit more, you know, give and take compared to the recodification that we just did, which is just literally, you know, I don't know how many people have strong opinions on, you know, Roman at one versus lowercase a for subsections, but, you know, people may have stronger opinions about this sort of stuff. So I think I I think it's a decent idea for for a supplemental budget request. And a lot of towns do this periodically. It's it's something that, you know, I'm on the statewide planner listserv and it seems like every six weeks someone is RFPing out. You know, a kind of a zoning, you know, we'll call it a rewrite, but it's not really a rewrite. It's sort of just, we'll have to figure out a term for it because we already used recodification. So we'll have to figure out what to call it.
How about just phase two of the recodification?
Yeah.
Well, I would be in support of that request and I did, I do see that as something sort of ongoing. We probably can't tackle everything all at once. So even a portion of that, if we could do do some some work on that.
Yeah, and 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 I think you obviously, you know, have seen, you know, the bylaw review committee, for instance, has an interest in, you know, cracking open the hood on the zoning. And and, you know, this is, you know, this is where, you know, they would, they would shine, you know, and I I think it's kind of in the spirit of the original charge of that group of, you know, combing through our bylaws. You know, obviously, you know, this is the zoning as opposed to the general bylaws, but, you know, I I I think I think it's good. And and again, you know, if we don't get it, then, you know, maybe maybe we look for other resources, but we can continue on with our business. But I think, you know, maintaining that commitment to, you know, modernizing and cleaning up our bylaws, I think is pretty important. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, I know it's getting late, but I know the bylaw review committee was requesting, put a request in for some funds for, I think, a clerk or somebody. So if we got this funding, would we be able to, you know, help them out with that funding if they weren't able to get it from another source?
I I mean, it's up to, it's up to you. I mean, ultimately, you know, it would be town meeting appropriating money and then the planning board would need to scope out, you know, the exact nature of of the project and and kind of the services that they'd be looking for. And and, you know, obviously, you know, other, you know, other committees could be a part of that if if you're interested. I I I don't know exactly. I know, I know they're they're looking for kind of administrative services. You know, to 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 what end in terms of their kind of workload and their kind of work plan? I don't, I don't exactly know. But also, you know, that that group is also looking at the general bylaws, you know, as well. So, you know, this is the type of thing where if if, you know, they can, they can focus on that and and and, you know, we can put some money behind zoning and kind of come together. But, you know, this is a long way of saying ultimately it's up to you all to to decide how you want that to work.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion and thought was that we would have general code update the actual electronic version because it becomes live on a website too. And that's searchable, searchable on a website is just so important.
Yeah.
And the other thing is just a zoning attorney because, you know, it is law and like these discrepancies in law, I, you know, I'm not an expert at, I don't know that that committee is an expert at. So I think an outside, you know, zoning expert could be beneficial and with zoning with general code. That, that was my thought.
Could we get like a, like a, just a little bit more specific on what like a certain number would get us? Like, how many hours would we be getting a consulting fee or, you know, legal advice? You know, something a little bit more detailed or or just would they typically put in, you know, just a a ballpark number? And more general?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, I I can do, I can do the research. I I think I think they're looking to get these supplemental budget requests in. But but I think, you know, I I I think, I think, you know, if we said forty thousand bucks, we'd be able to get a job done for that. You know, so I I don't think that, I don't think, Cheryl.
Sorry, I was just thinking, do you, do you, do you recall general code having a sort of opt-in unit or another service, which is that like project applications would also be searchable and a much better system of having project information available on the webs, the town website? I think they have a unit like that.
Yeah, the, I mean, the the issue with that is that we've got a different vendor that runs our our web or that not doesn't, but it's 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 a product that we use to sort of build the website. So that's a little bit of a broader conversation of, you know, does does that vendor have a similar tool? And and if they do, we would want to use that because we're already paying for it versus, you know, if we need to bring in sort of an outside.
Okay, because I remember having Joe Prandt came to the planning board at one time and looking for support for a module that would make it easier. People have a hard time finding our information on the website. You know, we think they, it's hard to to get people to be aware of projects. I hear from so many people, they can't find information about what things that we're working on, projects that we have before us. Because it's like buried into the website so far. So.
Yeah, so so the good, the good news on that is we received a state IT grant to to revamp our our whole town website. And it it it'll, it'll, the the look will be, well, the look will kind of generally be the same in terms of the design. But what is going to change is how it's used on the backend, which is how we use it. Currently, it's just, it's a real pain to upload documents. And the 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 way that the the information is organized on the website is really a function of this is the best way to do it without spending your entire life updating the website. And so, you know, the the changes that we're looking at are going to make it much easier to upload documents and organize pages and 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 things like that. So I I that's a fix that's already kind of in the process of happening. In terms of applications and permits, I I don't know where, I, because I, Joe and I talked about this a while back. I I don't know where that went. But I'm actually, you know, every, every month and a half, I get a an email from someone demoing some new permitting software or website. So, you know, there's a ton of stuff out there. And that's something where I think, you know, step one is what is the new website that the whole town is going to be using going to look like? And then step two is, does it meet our needs and do we need to look elsewhere for our needs?
Maybe that'll be next to your supplemental budget request.
Okay, are we done?
Okay, then we need, I think we need a motion.
So.
Are you done, Meredith?
No, can we make, but I think Tim needs to hear that we would like to have the supplemental budget request.
All right. So then I'd like to make a motion to request forty thousand dollars for what I'm going to call phase two of the recodification, which would address some of the items that general code had identified in their initial work, such as some parts of our zoning code being out of compliance or inconsistent with state law. And then other things that we've identified as consistent definitions at the front section of the code, dimensional tables that put information in one place rather than scattered throughout, adding purpose to sections and other things of similar nature.
I second.
Okay, a roll call. Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. All right, we have just had our first capital improvements committee meeting also. And I had on their committee updates, but I'm going to defer that and I'll let you all know what's happening with that in open space and recreation. And I would love to hear from all of your committees at at a next meeting. So look forward to hearing those. And with that, I am, if, Tim, do you have anything else? And otherwise, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
You're muted, Sean, but Sean did a second.
No, I'll take that as a second. Okay. All right, Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening all, thank you for everyone who stayed on.